Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Select Board meeting for July 22, 2025. Thank you for bearing with us as we had a meeting just prior to this, so sorry for starting a few minutes late. I'm calling this to order, and please join us and stand if you are able to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to go to public comment. By our rules, we have 21 minutes total for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. I know there are a lot of folks that are here today that are going to be speaking about Randolph Ave, so I would encourage you, in order for everyone to have a chance, if someone's made the point that you would like to make, just give them an amen, and then we'll hopefully be able to get everyone on. We've got a lot of folks that are here in person, there's one person online as well, so we'll try to get everyone in if we can. So first, we have Ms. Agostino.
Thank you very much. Diane DiTulio Agostino, Town Meeting Member, former Select Board Member and resident of 147 Ridgewood Road. Thank you very much for this opportunity to discuss the unsafe, deadly suicide alley that travels through Milton. I don't know if everyone in the room knows the history, but it needs to be known that Route 95 basically comes all the way up to Florida and was stopped in Milton. It was stopped because of the foul meadows spotted frogs. My question is, how many deaths have we had? How many disabled individuals? We'll never know, really, because once someone leaves the accident scene, we don't really know how disabled they are. And yet, how many spotted frogs have we saved? The Mass Department of Transportation, for years, so it's been 48 years total that I've been working on this, it's one of the only reasons I ran for selectmen, aside from opening the fire station in order to have them be able to respond. And it's great that the state and Milton Police are now coordinating traffic enforcement. However, the Chickatahut at Randolph Ave to St. Ease is nothing but a racetrack, primarily because the lights are not functioning. Hillside Street will only function if someone's coming out. We learned this in 2022 when the Milton Police Chief, Fire Chief, we walked from Eagle Road down to Ridgewood, and he pointed out Hillside only functions and Reed Street when someone's coming out. The State Department needs to hear from you tonight that Reed Street now has the animal shelter and the construction project. So those increased traffic flow should absolutely allow for that light to be functioning. I'd also like to request that you have the Mass DOT do a traffic count out of Wallaston Golf Club. There are hundreds of cars, possibly some days with tournaments, coming out of there. I know the light can't go there because of the steep hill. However, knowing that traffic count coming out of Wallaston may possibly encourage an extra light be added to this suicide alley corridor at Eagle Farm, which has the Pepsi plant in Newcombe Farm exiting there. There have been many tragic accidents there. The speed limit lights are great, but they don't stop the traffic. Traffic lights will stop the traffic. I did provide, was that three minutes?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I did provide the town manager pictures to be able to be used tonight, just taken today, to show the blinded brush that I was promised would be cut in early July. It should have been cut in May, but we have new individuals in Milton's DPW. In conclusion, I thank you for anything and everyone you can call, including the Governor, to make this road safe, because my landlocked neighbors, we have no option but to enter on that road. And there's a photo. I would kindly ask if you would consider a moment of silence for the people that just passed away.
We'll do that after the citizen's speech.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Driscoll.
I would like to thank the board for letting me speak tonight. I was at church that night of the accident. At 4:15, there was sirens galore, and I have men that come in, the Pepsi, we park up there, and I went up there after Mass. The accident was like a NASCAR accident. It was eerie, and the personnel there were doing great, unbelievable. And there was a Randolph ambulance that was coming out of Milton-Hoffel. I think that was the first ambulance there. So there was medical help there right away, but that scene was unbelievable, and it was very tragic and just sad. But I live at 718 Randolph Ave. I start my morning at four o'clock, and at four o'clock, I can pull out of my driveway very safely. And I'm in my driveway at least 20, 22, 23 times, and it's a very tough driveway to pull out. And I don't have to tell you, speed is the whole factor in all this. The house down the street at 675 was hit for the second time in two years, the front of the house. So it's speed. And the police have been out there the last two weeks doing radar and doing their job. It's just that people speed on that road, and the light should trigger all the time, even if there's no cars there, trigger them. Just have them trigger and aggravate people from using that road. And Ms. Hagerty, you work for the state, I think, the DPW, could you get them to cut that Randolph Ave grass? I saw a snake on that sidewalk, and there's a lady that comes out of her house at 6:30. She crosses the street, and she can't use the whole sidewalk because the grass is coming out at her, and I'm afraid she's going to get hit by a car. They've been up and down that street, but they're somehow leaving the grass like this. And it's just, I don't know why they can't do the job all in one day, but I'd appreciate if you do that, because there are people that try to use the bus stop if the bus slows down to pick them up, but that's going pretty fast. But we have more housing, and it's just more housing calling for that area, and it's just going to be more and more issues. And another question, that big 90-unit building going up across the street from me, like my son said, you can only take a right out of it. They're going to go all the way up to Hillside Street to turn around? You can't go Reed, you can't go Highland, you can't go up those roads until after 9:00 AM. So I don't understand how that's going to work. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Beckman, sorry.
Hi there, Mary Beckman. I live at 640 Harland Street, near the intersection with Hillside. Thanks for having this discussion and inviting comment. I have a couple of questions or points I was going to make. One was already made about the fact that there's going to be increased volume on the stretch of Randolph Ave that we're talking about because of the high-density development already being built and the zoning that has gone through that will invite more. That may be a great thing, but obviously, the road can't handle that. So I'm wondering, is there a mechanism where Mastot is aware of that and is incorporating that into their planning, which we hope they are planning for a comprehensive approach? So that's my point number one. In addition to the animal shelters, also a good point. Second, I'm no expert on this by any means. I've just started to dip my toe into the 2021 corridor study, the 500-page. Lots in there, lots of recommendations, lots of things to consider. I understand that it takes a while for Mastot to evaluate the various approaches that were suggested in that report. But here we are many years later, and we really can't live with the road the way that it is. And so my question is, you know, there are some concrete things that were suggested in that report, like additional traffic lights. Can't the evaluation of that be sped up? And in the interim, would Mastot fund additional traffic enforcement resources for the town of Milton, including maybe a couple of FTEs and a car dedicated to this corridor? Because, you know, the town cannot bear the burden of the enforcement that is really required here. It's a state highway, and the traffic flow serves the entire state. I think it's appropriate to request additional resources from the state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have lived at 291 Hillside Street at Forest Street for 46 years, so I have a long view of the traffic in the neighborhood. Over that period, 40 of those years, our Neighborhood Association, our Neighborhood Association was founded in 1985. So we have, in that period of those 40 years, the number one issue that has come up again and again under 13 or 14 presidents is traffic and the traffic speed through the neighborhoods. It doesn't go away. In that period also, I believe, on Randolph Avenue between Chickatahut and Ridgedale Road, eight or nine people have been killed. And I think the state statistics will back that up. That is too many. And we believe that the Department of Transportation is not taking the problem seriously enough and has not proposed solutions that would deal with the problem. So I have two suggestions. One, automatic speed cameras and automatic ticketing, which I believe is legal now in Massachusetts. If it's not, then it should be. I lived in a community at one point where they had that, and believe me, it helped more than anything else to control traffic speeds. And second would be the addition of a stoplight or two and to extend the period in which stoplights are red or red so that you can get out safely. Three days after the accident, I tried to get from Hillside Street onto Randolph Avenue going north, and I counted five seconds after the light turned, there was a car coming north on Randolph Avenue that ran the red light. And I can't tell you how many times I pulled out there when people run that red light. So it's only about a 15- or 20-second red light, so that gives, if I wait five seconds, that gives three cars a chance to get through the intersection. It's not long enough, and it's not safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Milan, how much time do we have left?
I have 11:20.
11:20, okay, great. I'm gonna, we have a couple of hands up online. The first one is just iPhone. If we could promote iPhone, and if you could identify yourself and your address.
Yes, this is Ian Gregorio, Milton's number one neighbor, 41 Hawthorne Road, Milton, Mass, West Side. How are you today?
I did not do that. Very good, Ian. Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank Diane for the spotted frog. Didn't know that. That's a fun fact. That's amazing. So want to note that. And thank John Driscoll for all his work in town. He does a lot of side stuff that people don't realize, and he doesn't get paid for it. So he really, just want to give him a thank you to that. And just wanted to address just the Randolph Ave. I think a short-term fix to this problem would be, I understand that there's, you know, speeding things there that kind of reflect the speeding. But if they had the flashing red and blue lights that go along with that, that makes such a big difference in people's perception to slow down, because there's one over on, it's over by Cedar Grove, and people slow down automatically when they see those lights flashing. And you get the speed thing, but nobody's paying attention to it. But those red and blue lights would make such a big difference. So that's what I think, something like that, and I proposed that, and I think it's something to look into that. And then my other side thing, which has to do with Adams Street, over by, just for the Select Board and people to look into this, there's a handicap spot across the street from Milton Village. And it makes absolutely no sense. The handicap spot needs to be moved over to the side where the post office is and the Milton Village hardware, because there are elderly people that are crossing the street there, and I see it all the time, and it absolutely blows my mind. It's a very dangerous spot for cars coming down that hill, and they cannot make it across that street. And with the new building going up over there, I just think it would be better if they moved a handicap spot to the end or something like that. And that's it. And I just appreciate you guys taking questions. I want to say for other people.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorio.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so back in person, we have Yanis Tomazos, if I'm saying that right.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Yanis Tomazos of 375 Hillside Street. The average rate of car accidents for the last five years in these two-mile highway straights, we're talking about two miles here, is about 100 car crashes per year, and that's using Mastot's own data from their online app that they have available online. So somebody can easily assume, actually, the traffic violation. So somebody can easily assume, actually, the traffic violations are much, much higher, right? So this, I mean, really underlines the extent of the problem. Representative Wells' letter to Milton Times on July 17 referenced the years of the problem on this two-miles Milton section of Route 28 highway. And the multiple studies done by Mast dot without sufficient action, he called for a comprehensive approach by Mast dot, including lowering the speed limit, adding traffic, calming measures, and ensuring that enforcement is visible and consistent. We all agree with these ideas. Is Mast dot preparing an action plan with these elements? Would like to know. Thank you so much.
Very welcome, thank you. Mr. Milano, how much time do you have left? 7:50, okay. We're going to stay in the room.
Hi, my name's Maggie Oldfield. I'm a town meeting member, a member of the planning board, and a member of the Climate Action Planning Committee. I'm here to advocate for a total redesign of Route 28. Our goal as a town is to provide and enhance the overall quality of life for our residents. And we need a road design that prioritizes user safety and human experience over maximizing traffic flow. Safety is the primary goal. Streets should be designed to encourage driver awareness and caution rather than allowing for passive, high-speed driving. Streets should be designed to create a sense of security for all users, including the cyclists and pedestrians. And this means considering the overall streetscapes, including the road itself, trees, lighting, crosswalks, signage. And all that combined gives the street a certain character and a feel. And we don't have that now on Route 28. We need to focus on local context and local needs. Streets should be designed based on the specific needs of the character of our community. While engineers are essential for technical aspects of the road design, we believe we should, those should not be the only voices in the design process. Milton has been, been awarded for our commitment to local sustainability, including being recognized as a bike-friendly community. And the governor is pursuing a net-zero climate action plan that reduces greenhouse gas emissions to near zero by 2050. Milton's greenhouse gases have risen since 2017. The largest source of Milton's greenhouse gases comes from the transportation sector. How can we possibly meet the state's goals if we cannot reduce the emissions of the 30,000 cars who use Route 28 every day as a cut-through? We need to shift our focus from a cut-through mentality to a local health and opportunity mindset. Streets should be designed to support local businesses and contribute to the overall economic and physical health of our community. Cut-through traffic can, can make it more difficult for potential customers to access businesses. High-traffic volumes and speeds can create an unwelcoming atmosphere, deterring customers. Most of the cut-through drivers are not stopping to support our businesses. We need to address the strode problem. Streets and roads are two different things. The function of a street is to attempt to grow the complex ecosystem of our community. In contrast, the functions of a road is to connect places. And a strode is a mashup of these two concepts. They are referred, they refer to as the futon of transportation, because just like a futon is neither a particularly good bed or a particularly good couch. And a strode is neither a good road or a good street. So thank you for listening and we hope that Mast dot is listening too.
Could we just get your address real quick?
I've been a resident of 237 Hillside Street, but probably longer than Robert Mussey. I've been there for 56 years.
Thank you, Ms. Oldfield. We're going to do one more in person and then, how much time do we have left? 4:45. So we have one more in person and I'll go back to online. And so we have Mr. O'Rourke, not talking about Randolph Ave, for a change of pace.
Good evening. Sean O'Rourke, 27 Quarry Lane, town meeting member, precinct A, Chair of the School Building Committee. Here tonight to just give a brief update for the school building committee work that we've been doing up till now. As the boards are aware, we've been working with MSBA since May of this year, working with Module One. Module One afforded us a 270-day timeline, which essentially equates to January 2026, when we have to complete. I want to make you aware, we'll probably be complete in September of this year, so we're working, you know, at a fast pace. With that, that's going to line up to MSBA's next board meeting in October, where we hope to graduate to Module Two, which is forming of a team, where you onboard an OPM and an architect. With that, you know, we've been using this as part of our committee right now to forecast what our overall project schedule is going to look like. Our main thing that we've been doing is taking template other MSBA projects, looking at our timeline and seeing where we end up, mainly for a funding article. As you're aware, we looked to have a funding article last fall. We understand with that and, you know, we're, we're in with MSBA now. The, the thing that pops with us right now is with the land swap legislation that went through, there's a reverter clause associated with this in June of 2028. So as we're looking at these templates and looking at these timelines, our concern is we're going to extend beyond that June 2028 deadline. So, school building committee, looking at this, made a vote last night to be unanimous to propose an article for the fall town meeting to extend that reverter clause to 2033, which is essentially a five-year extension on that. I did reach out to Senator Driscoll today, let him know that that was our intention. I know for you guys, it's not on your agenda tonight, it was alluded to at your last meeting. But, you know, for, for us, because we had just voted on it last night, I just wanted to present it to you and hopefully in a future meeting, we can come present and go through question and answer in a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. So we'll do one more online and then if we still have time, we'll go back to the room. So we have Tracy Dyke Redmond. If you could unmute yourself. Mr. Milano, how much time? So you'll have 2 minutes and 34 seconds total. If you, if you choose to not use all of it, we'll pass it along to the next speaker.
Sure. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tracy Dyke Redmond. I live at 9 Ellsworth Road in Milton. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the draft climate action plan, which Alex Hasha, who's co-chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee, presented to the select board last month. I've worked in the energy sector for the last 10 years, currently for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I previously served on the Climate Action Planning Committee. Every day, we observe the effects of climate change. They become more obvious and alarming. Flash floods, wildfires, droughts, heat waves, all of these are exacerbated by climate change. And we've seen all of these impacts right here in Milton. To address these risks, it's really important that residents and all levels of government, local, state, and federal, do two things. One is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change. And two is to prepare for climate hazards like floods, fires, and droughts. The climate action plan that the committee has prepared addresses both of these steps. And it lays out action items that the town can take itself and to help residents address climate change and prepare for the risks. So I ask that the select board engage with the Climate Action Planning Committee to finalize and endorse the draft plan and to allocate staff time and resources to begin implementing the plan. The committee's done so much good work, I really applaud their effort and I thank the select board for considering working with them on it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one minute left. Mr. Hasha is here. If you have, you have a minute?
I can compress to a minute.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex Hasha, resident of Milton at 134 Nahanton Avenue. And I'm actually here to talk about Randolph Avenue and not the climate action plan. So I share the concern of many of my neighbors in that neighborhood, that a narrow focus on the, the dangerous intersection of Chickatahut Road and Randolph Avenue has led, left critical safety issues unaddressed downstream between Chickatahut and Reesdale Road. So a lot of what I wanted to say has been addressed. I just want to emphasize the need for pedestrian safety investments, particularly on the, the northbound side of the road. Somebody mentioned the sidewalk's very narrow, the, the grass isn't cut. I think the data probably doesn't show many bicycle or pedestrian fatalities because, on that stretch of road, because very few people are willing to risk it. So you don't really see pedestrians or bicycles there at all. And again, we, we heard that the importance of reducing traffic emissions, I think making it possible for people to use alternative forms of transport safely has got to be a critical, critical priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hasha. And thank you to everybody who came out. If you didn't have a chance to share your thoughts, please don't hesitate to email the select board and, and let us know. So that is the end of our public comment period. Did the team win, Mr. Daley? All right, he was coaching a game. So we're going to then go to the introduction of Alex Ortiz, Director of Veteran Services for the Randolph Milton Veteran Services.
Reminder for a moment of silence?
I, I was going to do that when we go to the 128, but I appreciate the comment from the, yeah. Or when we go to the 28 section. So if we could introduce Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Milano?
Sure, thank you. Alex, you can come up to the chair here. So Alex started a couple of weeks ago as the new Veterans Director for the Randolph Milton Veterans District. I'll let him introduce himself, give a little background in what he's got started. But we look to have Alex back for a more kind of fulsome discussion about the, the district, the office, and what his intentions are there. But for now, an introduction to you and kind of what your first takeaways are here in Milton and Randolph.
Great, so kind of prepared something for two minutes, usually the talking point, so I'll go right to it. Good evening, members of the Milton Select Board and fellow residents. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself as your new Director for Veteran Services for both Milton and Randolph. My name is Alex Ortiz and I'm honored to serve our veterans in this community in this dual capacity. As an Iraq and Afghanistan combat veteran myself, I understand firsthand the challenges our veterans face when transitioning back to civilian life and navigating complex benefits and services available to them. Over the past five years, I've dedicated my career in veteran advocacy across multiple states, territories, and the Pacific region. Most recently, I had the privilege of serving in the Secretary of Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee for the U.S. Outlying Areas and Freely Associated States, where we address systematic issues on the access to different types of benefits and the lack thereof. This experience taught me that effective veteran services require both macro-level understanding of the policies and procedures and a micro-level of attention to detail on the veterans' needs for that specific population. During law school, I witnessed how underserved our female veterans and military dependents were in accessing their earned benefits, because it's not just for veterans. This motivated me to take action. I drafted and advocated for 14 bills of veteran legislation in Puerto Rico, of which four became law within 10 months, thanks to grassroots advocacy and VSO networking and advocating for them. This work led to the recognition of the White House as a Latino leader driving change and invitation to participate in a panel discussion where I was able to advocate for not only Puerto Rico and the territories, but also for all the islands of the Pacific and the veterans that served there. Here in Milton, I see tremendous opportunity. We have dedicated veterans, supportive families, and a community of stakeholders who genuinely care, and I've noticed that in the last three weeks and the first three weeks that I've been here. My goal is to build bridges between veteran services, between the different generations of veterans, and between our veteran community and the broader Milton community. I believe in collaboration over isolation, because our veterans, especially our older population veterans, definitely feel lonely. But I would also like to identify the gaps and create solutions that ensure veterans don't fall through the cracks when looking for their benefits and understanding which benefits they have. Milton deserves a veteran services program that matches the caliber of veterans and the residents who call this town a home. I'm committed to making that vision a reality and I look forward to working with this board, town departments, and community organizations to achieve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. If you wouldn't mind, I think we might have a couple of questions, but I do want to first thank you for your service and welcome you to the town. We're so delighted to have you here. And based on your presentation, we know that you'll be a great asset for the town. But I'll turn it over to my fellow board members if you have any questions or anything you'd like to say.
No questions for me, just welcome.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I did talk with town manager Brian Howard in Randolph and he spoke very highly about you from the second you came on board. We talked on Memorial Day. I can say as the father of a female Marine Combat Veteran, I know some of the things you're referring to today and those are things that are extremely important. Just yesterday, I had a meeting with two physicians assistants from the VA system here in Boston, and the stories that they articulate and tell are very true. Just, and I'll leave you with this one last final point. On Saturday of last week, I sat with a Medal of Honor recipient, the former Senator from Nebraska, Robert Kerry, a tremendous hero in service. He's, he's an amputee, he lost his leg in Vietnam. He had not been able to walk for months because having such pain with his prosthesis. Born into Walter Reed and they were able to drill a titanium bolt into his leg and he probably, there's no idea I'm going to tell this story, but he was so descriptive telling me and showing me it, that I have, he gave me the chance to tell it to someone. That he is pain-free for the first time in years, will never need enough prosthetic in his life, so. Often in life, people don't realize just how important our veterans are, I can tell just from our first meeting tonight. You carry that in your heart and your soul and that's a benefit to everyone in this district, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. I have nothing else to add beyond my, my thanks, which I've already given. We look forward to working with you. We do have a really great community of veterans in town and it looks like they are in very, very good hands. So thank you again for joining us and look forward to our work together.
Thank you, and I look forward to being able to collaborate and participate also and see how we could better the community and especially the veterans. Thank you.
Look forward to that, thank you. So our next item is a discussion with Mast DOT regarding Route 28. I would like for us to observe, it was a terrible accident, I, you know, I didn't see it firsthand, but I saw, saw the aftermath and even though it's just heartbreaking, the amount of lives that have been lost on this road. So if we could all please join just for a brief moment of silence for those who lost Thank you. So we're going to invite our friends from Mast DOT to come up. Are we going to have, how many folks are here from?
Four.
Four. We've got one, one chair.
He's got four chairs, no, he's got four, he's got those four chairs.
We might have to juggle some chairs for you, for you gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing myself.
Please, thank you. Enjoy the Tetris.
Those four chairs, if you'd all bring up, bring them, that whole row with you. What, are you going to come in teams, two and two?
Tag, tag in and out. Just for the folks at home, if you wouldn't mind making sure that the microphone's closer, pointing to you when you speak. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Milano to kick off our discussion.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, my name is Neil Bedrow, I'm the Assistant Administrator for Traffic and Safety at Mast DOT.
Good evening, I'm Frank Welch, I'm the Deputy Director for Major Projects with Mast DOT.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, do you want to kick us off here?
I don't have much as a way of introduction, Mr. Chair, other than obviously in the wake of the crash, we had reached out to Mast dot with information about what steps the department might take in terms of improving safety on that stretch and invited them to this meeting to provide an update. We've published and shared on our website the historical information related to both Chickatahut and Randolph and that project, but also the other historical projects or studies that have been undertaken, including two road safety audits, the CTPS corridor study, and the other documents are all available publicly, so we've, we've continued to post that out there. So that was really the interest in giving them an opportunity to provide an update to the boards. I don't know if you had?
Thank you. I would, I will exercise my privilege as Chair just to say a few words before we get going. And obviously, I appreciate that you, you gentlemen were here for Citizen Speak and you got to hear from many of the residents who have, this has been a concern for a very long time. After that accident, I, you know, this is something that I've been familiar with, you know, as long as I've lived in Milton. I, I just kind of got curious and I spent a lot of time on Google Maps, which I think, you know, that, people who know me will not be surprised. And it kind And it kind of occurred to me that the, that 28 is really a very unique road in the entire Boston metro area, in that it has such a long straightway, so few lights, and it's four lanes. I mean, I don't think you could design a better drag strip for Boston than what we've got right there. And I applaud the DOT for looking into the intersection, which has been, you know, at the top 10 deadliest intersections in the Commonwealth for quite some time. And I look forward to, and I do believe that the rotary will provide some alleviation for, of safety at that intersection. But I think what you've heard and what I've said previously in these meetings with DOT is the concern that now maybe instead of having a stoplight for a drag strip, we've got a rotary that starts a drag strip. And that's may influence the start of the races, but it's certainly not going to influence the speed downstream, as it was said. So I will be very curious to hear from you both and your colleagues about your thoughts about the rotary, but also about really looking at the safety. Because again, I looked around town, and I couldn't see anything that is the same as Randolph Ave, in terms of both the length, the straightness, and the four lanes and the limited number of lights. It's really kind of unique in the whole Commonwealth. So for that reason, I think it deserves some unique solutions. So we look forward to hearing from you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Administrator, Select Board Members, and all the residents that provided their feedback today. I definitely took a lot of notes, and I hear, hear the concerns. Obviously, right after the incident happened, we were able to mobilize some portable additional speed feedback signs, and I know that's doesn't, it's not a panacea. They're there to try to remind drivers of watching their speed, but it's only as good as what the feedback is. You know, I wish there was some kind of, I know there's a question about automated enforcement. Unfortunately, that is not currently legal in the Commonwealth. There is a bill that was filed as part of the governor's budget to try to introduce some local, and I know some other bills have been filed. And we think that it's a proven safety technology that has worked in other states and could be a benefit here, including the red light cameras. But it has to be done with the mindset of safety and not the mindset of monetary. And, you know, and it's something that, you know, we would support and back studies to advance that. One of the other things that we proposed immediately that we thought would be a good solution was to put centerline rumble strips. These were sinual sodal rumble strips, which are kind of like mumbles. So they're not the noisy ones that you'd hear on your interstate freeways, but you feel it in the car. So we would basically put that down the center and then put the yellow lines on the other side. So we would narrow the roadway. It helps to provide a little bit of a buffer between the lanes. But as we started to talk about some of the other alternatives that were studied in the corridor study regarding the, reducing it to one lane in one direction and maintain two in the other or vice versa, whether it's northbound or southbound, you know, we were aware that Senator Driscoll filed legislation to require us to put in a road diet. And a true road diet is not making two lanes in one lane when you have a four-lane cross section. It's actually taking away lane capacity, where you would bring it down to perhaps one lane each direction. And there's several different mechanisms to achieve that. You could put nice wider shoulders that would provide that pedestrian refuge and safety, possibly the ability to add a bicycle lane while having just the one lane in each direction. You could build in turn lane pocket facilities for those other intersections, whether it's a commercial driveway, a true intersection with another roadway. You know, and there's the option, which is done in some of our other corridors, but requires a little bit more study and collaboration, it's to put some kind of positive separation between, you know, the directions. And there is a large stretch from Chica Tabit up towards Hillside, where you could put something permanent, where there is not that turning movement constraints. You know, in addition, like a longer term, you know, our Highway Administrator, Administrator Gulliver, said, "We need to look at a more comprehensive study." And I think one of your residents, Maggie, I think we, hopefully that's who we talked earlier, "We need to look at the bigger picture." You know, just doing a corridor study that's focused on just the traffic and the speed issue is not going to solve the vulnerable road user and providing a sense of place and comfort. So we need to change the overall characteristics. So the CTPS study that was done in 2020, albeit the traffic volumes that they used for the study were COVID and not really representative of what is out there now, that could be a good, a great starting point. But I think a more comprehensive study, that's a true planning study that has all the stakeholder engagement, you know, what the vision is for the corridor, you know. And of course, there, any one of these options, the road diet, there's a price to pay. You know, I know I've heard loud and clear today that the cut-through traffic, they don't care about the downtown, stuff like that, and we're willing to accept those impacts to the cut-through traffic, and maybe they'll stay on the interstate system where they belong and not cutting through your community. But it also impacts the local residents and their ability to get around. So that's why it takes a study where everyone can give their opinions on what, you know, so that the decision is something that everyone could buy. And I think we're, based on the legislation file, we could go out and put a road diet in sooner than later. The district could put something permanent out there, like, not permanent, but, like a permanent structure that's like a temporary, you know, to put in place to do a pilot, test it out, see how it works. We could define those limits, working with representatives from the town, the planning board, and then kind of see how it works and evaluate, you know, do we extend it further? Do we do different treatments? Do we do a buffered median that, as I described with rumble strips? We can do even wider. By taking that, the one lane out, we have a lot of flexibility on what we could do out there to try to make it safer. You know, obviously, the straightness in that, that doesn't help, you know, people are the speeding violators and stuff like that. Hopefully, by narrowing the cross section and giving other road users some safety, will actually help the drive. And for one thing, during the peak hours, the congestion will help slow it. I mean, not that that's what we want to use congestion, but it's a effect of that. So we would like to do something. I mean, we could go out and have the district run off tomorrow and put that centerline, maybe not tomorrow, but put that centerline rumble strip. But if the desire is to do more of a road diet, to truly get the speeds down and the reduction, then that rumble strip would be useless, because we'd be changing what's inside that median. So I think we want to continue this dialogue, and whether it's working with a member from the Select Board, the Planning Board, or whomever we'd like to see, you know, we want to do what's best for you people, you know, not just what us engineers, you know, as someone said earlier, no, it's just what the engineers say. So we're here to help, and I know that doesn't solve anything, right, this immediate thing. You know, and I will address, former chief, just changing the sign and the speed limit is not going to, I've been in my job for many, many years. People don't give two about what the number is. They drive what they feel comfortable. Because that corridor is straight, there's not a lot of driveways, particularly between Chica Tabit thing. It's conducive to driving faster, because there's no conflict points, there's no, so we have to change that characteristics of the roadway section to get the lower speeds. And then we can respeed zone it and make it slower. And the roundabout, in theory, is, you know, a series of roundabouts in the corridor, maybe one at Hillside down the road. Again, it allows continuous movement. We don't have stop and go. People run red lights. You can't run a rotary, a roundabout, excuse me, that's the wrong terminology. And it's proven across, all across the country, that high-speed roadways, the only way to get them to slow down is to have a different type of, so. And then, sorry, Frank's here, just if anyone would like an update on the actual Chica Tabit project, so.
Why don't you go ahead and give us that, and then we can open it up for questions?
So we're currently finalizing the design, similar to what was presented at the last public information meeting in May. We're working through the final right-of-way and environmental permitting process to be able to advertise that project this fall and move into construction in the spring of 2026. And the idea is whatever, whatever short-term improvements, if we come up with any, would certainly be coordinated with that design to make sure we have a cohesive design through construction and a final product out there.
Thank you. Questions from the members?
I have a few, but I got Mr. Daley, are you sure? You're good? So thank you for coming. I want to thank Mr. Gulliver for reaching out to both Senator Driscoll and I last week in my office, and we had, and I followed up with Mr. Milano right afterwards. Oh, no, you were away. You, Nick. It was, I will say that he was understanding both, particularly being police chief and has so many incidents, like the gentleman from Hillside said he counted. I just counted 14 names in my head by incident, just off the top of my head, and I don't even know how many, and those are all fatalities. And I, and I didn't even have to go back that far. One of the things that I said to Mr. Gulliver was that you touched base on, you know, when you look at the two routes, and if you look at 138 and 28, you know, 138 will have its fatality here and there, but nothing like this unique piece of roadway between Chica and, say, Reed Street. That four-lane double each way is part of it. Add to it congestion, add to it hiccups at 93 and 1. I was in a meeting today in the State House with another state agency, and they started talking about how they use 28 to come further south, how they use the 28, because anytime there's a hiccup at the split of 93 and 3, if you're coming up 24 or across 128, or from Randolph Ave on Brockton, 28's the first solution to go to, which gives congestion issues. And then once you get to that four-lane corridor, where you can put your foot to the gas, you're going to do it. It is very hard from a police perspective to enforce it, because just for marked unit or unmarked unit to make a motor stop either north or south in that four-lane, you have to block a lane of traffic to do so, which creates an additional hazard, not just for the officers and the car being stopped, but the cars trying to motor around it. It's very, very, it's not like a, 93 North, where you have a breakdown line, you pull the car, even 138 has a buffer on both sides. 28 does not have that. Well, 20-something years ago, and as Ms. Agostino will remember, when they took out that hill at Chica Tabit to extend and put the red flight, you know, that was supposed to, and widened all the way down and added the lights at Hillside Street, added the lights at Reed Street, that was going to be the solving. I don't think anyone thought 20 years later would be back here, and it's worse than it was then. But clearly, this is significant. I was in Idaho when this accident, on my way to Idaho, the district attorney of this county called me to tell me about the severity, knowing that I would, the severity, that what his DAs were referring to him about the type and the mechanism of that accident, and to what Mr. Driscoll said, he's correct. And I think every person that spoke here tonight, I know exactly what they're talking about. And I don't think the police chief can fix it. I don't think the state police can fix it. This is going to require, in addition, the rotary will, and you're right, there's a reason why AARP wrote a story about how 14,000 roundabouts were installed in a calendar year in this country. There's a reason why for it. It's things like this. But to Mr. Chair Zoll's point, we have to be able to address those four lanes and that downhill alley, which is nothing but get on the gas and go, and you're not going to stop again till you get to 28 or split. It's going to really take some time and effort from your, and money to do this, because, you know, how many more people can you afford to have moments of silence for? I mean, these residents, they post it all the time, you see it all the time, it's a unique piece of roadway that is nothing but a recipe for death and serious bodily injury. And I think, I know the roundabout will deal with the intersection, but we've got to deal with this. And I think you've got the message, my, I think Senator Driscoll thinks that, I think all of us get that. This can't just be a one-and-done. We have to fix this. We can't talk about it anymore. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you for your time in the State House.
Mr. Daley, do you have anything that you'd like to?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to hear what was said previously, but I can sort of intimitate. I think what is most important for me right now is, what are we going to do? I think saying that it's dangerous, speaking about the possibilities or the timeline, I think what you hear from the citizens is speaking about decades of this year-over-year, you know, it could be, something could be happening right now in the concern, right? And every day that we don't have something in place or a plan, this rotary has taken a number of years, and, you know, we don't have shovels in the ground, right? So I don't want to be back here in five or six years saying that we haven't changed anything. So, you know, I hear that you're saying, you know, changing the middle and doing the rumble strips or widening that, that we may have to take that out if we go down to a single lane. But we're going to need to have something in place. I think that's what I'm looking for, is like, what happens now in six months, and then does that change? And what do we keep track of to say, does this change? I know we have difference between worrying about speed and worrying about congestion, and those are two different solutions. But coming through the Blue Hills from Randolph in one lane, shooting out into four, and then coming back in the other direction, you know, it is poorly designed. I'm not sure the rotary is going to change that, but we're going to need to say that this is the plan that we see, and if maybe over time, you've said, "We've seen in roads like this, this is what works, and this is what slows the fatalities down, and this is the plan that we have going forward." And I'm not, I'm not seeing that here. So, you know, what is the timeline for us widening the streets, widening the sidewalks? Is a bike lane even safe to have on that strip and slowing that down? And what's the timeline for the road diet? I think we got denied one a little while back, and we still don't have a plan in place. So I think that's really why I stand now, is I want to be able to leave here with MassDOT and saying, "This is something that we are going to do, not something that we're going to talk about doing."
If you guys would like to respond.
So again, we're prepared to move forward with a road diet, where we bring it down to one lane each direction. There's, there's options that we have to consider. So right now, we've got people putting together kind of like a very quick and understanding pros and cons type of matrix, so we can come back to whomever you designate, Mr. Chair, from the town, whether it's Police Fire EMS, some representatives of the plane, and say, "These are the options." A quick pilot is quick, is something for us easy to put into place. If it's striping or, I don't know, rumble strips or, you know, we could put some kind of positive separation between the lanes. We just want to make sure that what we decide, everyone's on agreement for, that this is the pilot. So then we know what to study, study the impacts. The longer-range things of putting, widening the sidewalks and putting a bike lane, that's going to have to come later, you know. We can get this out here, I mean, we could probably get stuff in place, you know, before Labor Day, if we have concurrence on direction, stuff like that. It's a matter of, you know, we'll present, these are the options, these are the pros and cons, what do people think? And then we'll get direction and go. I mean, we would have been doing the rumble strip down the center, but if that's, if we're going to turn around and rip it up, we didn't want to waste the dollars. We'd rather come back, like, let's focus on the road diet. That's a little easier than the pilot. And again, with the pilot, it allows us flexibility of, all right, it's not working here, this is working here, we're going to change something, we can do that, all while the more comprehensive study can get going on the vision for the corridor.
Mr. Daley, anything?
So my question is, to do that with the current configuration of Randolph and Chica, is it a safe thing to do? Without, in other words, we're talking about doing this right of way, not like when the roundabout's done. Is it safe to do it now?
You'd have to do some work at the signal to basically create turn lanes. So we'd have to do some, and we have our traffic signal guy from District Sig, but anyways, we could look at the signal operation there, because you could create those dedicated turn lanes and then just have the one lane going through. You could do something where you bring two through and then drop them after a short distance, which is common across Massachusetts. It's not the most user-friendly. Drivers don't like to play nice with that short merge. So we do have some of those options before we narrow it down just to the single lane. So that, we're looking at that as well, you know, as part of this quick build pilot.
I just want to acknowledge, I see the hand up. We don't take questions from the floor.
Can't.
You can't speak during this, but the citizens' comment is the time for folks. You still can't, you still can't offer comments from the floor. I'm sorry.
I have a lot to say.
I'm sure that you do, but I'm sure that you do, but we can't, we can't have comments from the floor.
Any discussion.
Okay, thank you. Again, welcome your emails, and free to come back and be heard at another future citizen speak, but our rules don't allow for.
While they're here.
I appreciate that, and I know they were speaking. I appreciate that, and I, I know they were speaking with folks beforehand, and I imagine that you could probably chat with them afterwards as well. Just wanted to acknowledge that. And it's not that we don't care about what folks have to say. We just have, we have rules that we have to follow, unfortunately. Mr. Wells, did you have?
No, I'm just, and that, as long, I think it's imperative that dialogue continue between Mr. Milano, Marina, the Chief King, whoever it is, and it needs to be.
I agree. Yeah.
I, I did think of, it was suggested to me to reach out to the state police to ask for the cat team, but I'd rather let you talk to Chief King about that. They, I mean, they, they will give assistance to communities wherever you, on a short-term basis, high impact. It's still difficult to do it, but I'd, I'd leave, I'd leave that decision to him, whether or not he wants it. But that was offered to me this week.
One question that was raised during citizen speak was the, were the lights, and how they're automatically triggered right now, and whether or not they could be programmed so that they're turning red regardless of if there's traffic waiting to come in.
Yeah, so the signals are currently semi-actuated, so that they, because the majority of the traffic is on the 28 corridor, they get the bulk of the green time. When there's demand on those side streets, it will provide them what's necessary. To, to change it would basically, to put it into like a pre-time operation, where you would have to designate how much green time gets onto the main line and how much green time in the side streets. I mean, that, that can be done. Again, that's, that will add to the congestion, but it may help slow things down in the interim, you know, while we're, we're making the decision on the, you know, what, what corridor, you know, road diet was the best one.
Yeah, I, I think everyone's aware that we can choose fast and unsafe or slow and safe, and, and the overwhelming majority of folks here wouldn't mind slow and safe.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a follow-up to that specifically? So, in that scenario, just so that we're kind of understanding it correct, you're saying it's either semi-actuated like now, where I roll up to Hillside, I might wait 30 seconds, but eventually trigger for me, and the lights will change. Alternatively, it could be green for three minutes, and whether I'm there or not, the signal's not going to care. Like, it can't be a hybrid system.
Correct. So, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. So, fully actuated would mean the, the main line would have to trigger like a detection system. Because there's, the majority of the traffic is on 28, that's why it's semi-actuated. So, it basically, it's so that the people on the side streets don't get penalized. So, when they do show up, it basically sends a call, so it's going to stop the 28 to allow the people on Hillside, and I forget the other name of the street, to come out. So, if we change it to pre-time, it's whatever numbers of seconds we give to each, it's always going to be running the same thing. Now, we could do time of day changes to try to address some of the, the traffic demand. But again, if there's no one coming out on that side street, and it's running, it's green, it's going to run that full cycle of green. So, there's, there's trade-offs.
Right.
I, I got it, because the congestion issue, that doesn't help the congestion, which is still, the, the side streets, the neighborhoods on the side streets pay the price.
Right.
Because the congestion, they're going to seek alternatives, cutting down.
Right, and that's why, that's why we, hasn't been done. It's been raised before, but it's, it ends up causing more issues, and it, and it impacts the people that live in the area more than the, and that's, that's kind of why we've kept it semi-actuated.
So, it seems to me, well, that, that could also potentially be part of a pilot study, where you could look to see what the impacts of that were, and then, you know, turn, turn it on for two months and, and study it.
Absolutely.
So, I, I, I'm in full agreement with Mr. Wells, that I think, and I, again, want to thank you all for coming out on short notice after that terrible crash, and really coming out with some great suggestions here. I think all of us would love to see some of this get put into place, particularly if we could do it before Labor Day. I think that would be fabulous. So, Mr. Milano, I might turn to you to, to say, and I, I would offer myself, or if anybody on this board here, I'm sure Ms. Haggerty would, would not want to participate, but if Mr. Wells or Mr. Daly were interested in being a point person for the select board, I'm also willing to do it myself. To sort of be a representative to a group like that, I think it would make sense for, to include Mr. Milano and probably either Chief King or someone else from, from MPD.
So, I'll gladly, because they've been very much in contact with both Senator Driscoll and myself since this, I mean, actually through the whole rotary project, they've been very, you know, a lot of people will speak against the rotary, but, you know, it's a roundabout action. When you came, and I've said this previously, when you came up with that roundabout idea, it was clearly not something I or the prior town administrator, Mike Denny, who, you know, historically is a road guy, had ever thought of. But when you look at the mechanism, the causation of the accidents there, I could see how you came to that conclusion. And that, that's really the one thing that I've been able to stay focused on, is that that, the mechanism of fatality and serious bodily injury at that intersection has been angular turns, and the roundabout will eliminate that. But that's one issue.
Yes.
Your issue that you articulated tonight is mine as well, which is, and so I'm, if some, you know, if someone else in the select would want to, I'm fine with that, because I, I have to say that in my short time in this new role, you've been very extremely communicative and responsive when, anytime we've reached out.
Thoughts, Mr. Daly?
If the chair is willing to lead it, I should.
Well, I mean, I would imagine, Mr. Wells, that you'd be participating as a state rep.
I'll do both. I'll do both. I will, I will gladly take a point on this for you, if you want, you know, just.
Well, how about, how about both of us?
Sure.
Are involved? And then, my suggestion might be that we, what would be great would be to get a written document from Mastat that sort of articulates, here, here are our proposed immediate solutions, and then maybe a timeline, knowing that the roundabout, or the, the roundabout's going in. What are some long-term solutions with the roundabout coming in as well with a timeline? And then, if we could have the short-term solutions, it sounds like, and I appreciate this very much, that you're already working on that. So, if we could get that maybe by week's end, then the group that includes Mr. Wells, myself, Mr. Milano, Chief King, is there anybody else you think?
Marina?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Of course, DPW.
Do we want the planning board?
We could.
No, it's not a plan, no. I don't think so, no.
Yeah. And we can keep them updated on it. Is there anyone else that we would want to include?
We can work on that as, coming out of this too.
I think just in interest of getting it, getting something done quickly, then if the board is okay with it, we could approve, we could give that group the power to approve a pilot program that could get started before Labor Day. I'm just thinking of the timeline that we have. We don't have a lot of meetings before Labor Day, and I think this is, this is a problem that sort of necessitates immediate action.
Correct.
Does that, does that sound like a feasible solution, Mr. Milano?
Yes, I think so. I think, because it sounds, just so I, I'm hearing correctly from Mastat, it sounds like Mastat is open to commencing a quick build pilot, road diet, but wants clear direction from the town, that the town is agreeable and amenable to that. So, I think that's the feat, and you referred to a matrix you're preparing, so as, you know, to, does, is that supposed to be informing pros and cons of the quick build pilot? Okay, so, yes, so as, as we're able all to evaluate that and see the potential impacts together, I think that's helpful.
So, then I, I think what we, if we could get that, that written document by the end of the week, then that group that we just mentioned could meet next week to basically thumbs up or thumbs down, or maybe selectively thumbs up the, the pilot studies that we, and then give you guys enough time to get stuff in place, so that, you know, we could have at least some sort of a temporary solution while we're continuing to work on the longer plan.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chair, we, we can get you a document to explain what we're, we're studying. It might take, we're actually looking at some crash modification factor stuff, so that there'll be some, instead of just subjective, we want some, so we can get you something, this is what we're studying, these are the different options, and then we'll get the matrix. We're meeting again next Monday with our full group, hopefully to, to try to get that ready, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, but by Friday, we can get you at least a, a description of what we're studying, what we're looking at for that quick build.
I anticipate that this will be quite the conversation.
Yes.
So, I didn't mean to imply that if you guys come up with new ideas or, or new thoughts that, please bring them to our attention at, at any point. But I, we probably need a motion to allow that group to make the pilot decisions, do you think, or if the board sort of generally consents to that?
We're tentatively, yeah, I think the board, a board vote to that effect would be helpful, I think.
You want to make it?
Yeah, I, do you want to make it? All right, well, I'll, I'll make a motion that Mr. Wells and myself, along with Chief King and Mr. Milano, and Marina from DPW, all, are sort of a ad hoc committee that will review and have the power to okay pilot measures for traffic mitigation on Route 28.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay, that's a unanimous vote. So, we look forward to our continued conversation. Again, thank you for bringing so many folks down in your, your consideration.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind, I know there's some residents here that might have some questions that they would like to ask you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you wanted to ask them your questions, you could do that.
They're not bound by the rules we are.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. Again, we, we just can't, can't.
Shocked to find out they're not here to see us.
Welcome back, Ms. Haggerty. So...
Where are we?
We are on number six now. Milton Landing Committee update regarding Milton Landings. Mr. Wells, I'll turn this over to you.
So, I'll be quick, I'll be quick, because Mr. Milano was away, so I haven't even had time to meet with him yet. We did have a lengthy meeting regarding multiple issues from the tenants, criminal activity, developing and installing cameras as quickly as possible. We did decide that, because it was, they really wanted me, we're going to schedule another meeting, probably later next week, to allow some public input, because we know that some of the residents of eighty-eight wanted to do that. So, that's, that's pretty much it, and I'll follow up with Nick during the week.
If you don't mind, Mr. Wells, was there any discussion about a gate? Because I know that was one of the considerations.
So, we, we did talk about it, but I think under chapter 91, we'd have a hard time. There wasn't a lot of support to do it, managing it, who, access. But clearly, there's a lot of options on the table that we talked about. Nick Corners was there as well. We did find a piece of equipment that's been parked on there for several months that's unregistered that I brought to Nick's attention and the police department's attention. We don't, do we find out yet who it owns it? Is it gone? It's gone, I believe. It's gone, I believe we removed it. But it'd been there for, for weeks. And so, we're going to have to do a better job of managing. We've got a Marina, you know, we're running an operation now that's a, you know, a multi-thousand-dollar-a-year operation, and people need to be safe, and, you know, there were 50-something rounds fired in that incident. We can't have something like that again, so. So, I'll hope, and then we're going to schedule another meeting next week, just to let some of the residents of eighty-eight Worf voice their concerns as well.
I think that's great. It would be great to, you know, I, I know we always post our meetings.
We'll post it.
Maybe if there's a way to put a written notice up at, at eighty-eight Worf as well to just let folks know.
Oh, yeah, they, they know.
Or we have that contact with the...
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
They were listening. They were definitely, there were a lot of them on the call, listening, so we, we made that.
And I'll just add to, to fill in some of the details. We do have proposals on cameras now that would provide, you know, full kind of coverage, and Dexter Southfield is installing cameras of their own, just so if, you know, there are incidents where you have a little bit more information to track down folks who may be involved. And as, you know, Mr. Wells mentioned, it's, we do want to be cognizant of it's a water, space, access, recreation entity. We want to encourage activity, and we want to encourage the right kind of activity. And more activity down there is good. So, we want to, you know, keep, the improvements that have been taking place there have activated that area very well. Between that and the Worf Park project that continues to move forward, we're hopeful that, that whole area will see a lot more interesting activity going forward, and bring more people down there, because it is a unique part of Milton.
Definitely.
That not enough people are, know about, or experience, really.
And that's been our goal since we started. I mean, it's really kind of amazing what we're brought down there in eight short years for something that no one, but we have to address that too. So, we talked about a lot of things, and I'll fill Nick in, and then we will have a public meeting, let the, let the residents come and voice their concerns as well.
Other questions? One final thought I had, Mr. Milano, how many seats are there on the landing committee? I know there's, I think there are five members of it. Is that right?
I don't think it's necessarily capped.
I don't think it's capped. As a matter of fact, it's funny that you bring that up, because one of the things I mentioned is specifically with the, the pollution issue in the river, I think we need to bring someone on from either has a relationship. I think there's two community residents that sit with NEPA. We have to stay on top of this. This is significant. And while, I don't think it's going to happen in my time on this board, maybe not even in my lifetime, but this is a, it's in the top five in the country, most polluted, top five rivers in the country, there are parts of river between High Park and Port Norfolk and Dorchester. And they've not even presented an option to us yet, and how they're going to address from Baker Dam going out, and, and from the study that we got the Seacoast grant for, Sea Council, what, three, four years ago now since we did it, it's as polluted, and the DNA samples from what's in Milton and Quincy and Dorchester is the same exact match to what was the causation factor, which is the dye plant in High Park. So, for our kids, grandkids, and their kids, we cannot let this soar. That's one area that I think we want to add to this community.
Yeah.
Some people that have that climate, environmental, you know, we have business, we have MPIC, we have select board, we have parks, we have building facilities, planning, but you need, I think we really need to have someone from that environmental aspect of it. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I, I brought it up for that, for that very reason. I, you know, I, I think that, that committee, it's, it is an incredibly important issue, and I think having a couple of extra folks to help with that workload would be really helpful. I know, it also probably could use a little diversity on the, on the committee as well. So, you know, if that's, if it's an issue that's important to any of our viewers at home, you know, the river rowing, the landing, the, all the amazing stuff that happens down there, please think about applying to be a member of, of that committee, because we could, we certainly use your voice and your help. Anything further on that, Mr. Wells?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So, moving along, Chief King, you have impeccable timing, as always. We're going to have MPD update with our police chief, John King.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me.
So, I'll preface this just briefly by saying, we've, we started to do this with our different departments across town, having the head of the department come in, provide a kind of brief overview of what's going on, positives, negatives, things that you're concerned about, things that we can potentially be helpful with on the select board. Really just the, the idea is to have a dialogue here, and not, to try to keep it kind of high level, not to get too far into the weeds with things, but certainly if there are issues that people want to dive into, maybe we can identify those as future topics for, for future agendas. And Mr. Milano, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, you covered it well. Thank you.
So, please, go ahead, Mr. Chief.
Sounds good. I'll give you a kind of a basic overview. If you have a question, just ask. You know, internally, stuff going on at the Palm, and one thing is, one of those things nobody sees, but we're doing a lot of renovations at the station. There's a lot of issues with that. You know, we had some capital money for the EOC, which is our emergency operations center. We have some issues in our prisoner area that, you know, aren't in compliance or weren't in compliance, that we had to update, that just have deteriorated over time. We had some flooding issues in the basement, so we had to do some, you know, reorganization to some evidence storage and stuff like that. So, that's been going on. A credit to Tom Akati from Cusade Facilities, who's been a huge help with that. HR issues, that's been an issue for several years, but it's really kind of stabilizing, and we're kind of dealing with all those. Right now, we're technically short three, but we have one in the academy. Currently, we have one going to the academy in October, and then we have one more that we anticipate filling in the near future. So, that would bring us back to our normal staff. And we still have some openings in communications, but we deal with that too. But that's it kind of internally. Externally, it's been a busy year, this calendar year. We've seen kind of an uptick in a few serious incidents and violent crimes. It's not really a trend, it's just been kind of really unrelated incidents, but we've had, you know, a handful of serious incidents this year we've been dealing with. In terms of ongoing trends, it's really the thing, to be honest with you, that people watching news or reading the papers anywhere, you see, you know, mental health is, you know, just a real sad... just a real sad situation, we deal with it daily. You know, we're fortunate, we have a mental health clinician, we've spent a lot of time training officers to deal with those situations, but the number of calls is just off the charts. So that's a huge trend. Another, I wouldn't say a trend, because it's always there, was a common thing back when Chief Wells was there, is a common thing today, it's just domestic violence generally, that's just a reoccurring, high-volume call. Also, sad situation, we do a lot to target that, again, with a civilian advocate in addition to our own officers and detectives. Well, the crime stuff has really shifted to, like, computer crimes, you know, more than like traditional break-in and enter-ins, robberies, larcenies, a lot of it's online now, people being scammed, identity thefts being stolen, you know, mailbox thefts where people are washing the checks and withdrawing money from people's bank accounts, stuff like that. So that's, I don't say a newer trend, but that's been a steadily increasing trend that takes up a lot of time. We've had some good success on that, we've made some good arrests, the detective units on that, that were doing some kind of large-scale attacks on Milton residents, there was some done to Towne of Milton, through Town Hall, and we've had some great success with that. Overdoses are down, you know, substance use is something you guys hear a lot about, that's a positive, that's really been trending downwards, which is interesting, at the same time, our mental health has been going upwards. We've made substantial progress on the overdose front in terms of fatalities and stuff, they still occur, but both the numbers and the deaths have really plummeted, so that's a good thing. That's about it, you know, the, you know, if anybody has a question, you know, about some of those serious incidents, I'm more than happy to answer them. You know, the serious incidents, you know, we had, you know, this year we've had two murders, you know, unrelated, we've had, you know, another very serious shooting, we've had a lot of fatal car crashes, you know, obviously, I know Master was here earlier speaking, I monitored that. So, you know, we focus a lot of attention on those, a lot of time, you know, the violent crimes kind of, you know, I don't want to say they're not preventable, but a lot of times, you know, they happen, and you're more reactionary, and you got to deal with them, and put a lot of manpower and work into solving those. You know, fatal car crashes, very sad situations, you know, a lot of them are just the roads we hear about Randolph Ave, you know, these reoccurring roads that really need a road design, not to remove responsibility from the police, but the police will never be able to keep up with it, it needs, you know, traffic engineering solutions, stuff like that. Positive things, events going on, you know, it's the summertime, National Night Out is August 20th, that's the night we host at the police station like an open house, so we have that coming on, that's usually very well-attended, assuming we get good weather. The Dare Camp, we ran a week of Dare Camp for kids in July, we'll run another week in August. I always like to give credit to the Coldwood Foundation, they have funded this since its creation, and it wouldn't exist without their generosity. So, that's really kind of an overview, but I'm happy to delve into anything people want.
Thank you very much. Turn it over to the members.
I have a, so a question, you said the DV and mental health calls have been the large bulk of what you've been dealing with. On the mental health calls specifically, are, one, are these people that the force has engaged with on multiple occasions, are these sort of known, known folks who are in need of services or have been seeking services? And then, two, could you go through sort of the relationship between the community advocate, the officers, and how the officers are being trained or told to show up for these mental health calls specifically?
Sure. On the first part of your question, a lot of them are reoccurring in the sense of, you know, you have people in town, you respond there on an initial call, and then, you know, bipolar, schizophrenic, whatever their issue is, anxiety, and it's common to have a lot of calls to that house, it can be all kinds of stuff, and disturbing neighbors, fighting with family members, stuff like that, sometimes medical calls. I would say the majority are reoccurring. When we go to those, you know, we try and deal with whatever the immediate situation is that night, we have, the mental health clinician follows up with two of our community services officers, they'll go back to the house, or if that person was taken out of that house that night, let's say for treatment, they follow up with them wherever they're getting their treatment, and the best thing is, they continue to follow up. They will follow up weekly, monthly, depending on how responsive the person is, depending on them, are they, you know, taking them, and they, you know, attending programs, you know, some of them do inpatient and come out, we'll kind of welcome them home when they come out, stuff like that. So, those are reoccurring. We have some one-offs in the sense of, you know, more transient people, sometimes you just might have something involving a car driving down the road that was just passing through Milton. A common one-off, but a busy one we're dealing with, is Milton Hospital, the emergency room, we go there a lot, and, you know, that hospital is very busy, Conny's closed, Norwood's closed, Quincy closed, and we go up there for either problems in the emergency room where it's a patient, or it's people in the waiting room, sometimes involves to physical altercation with nurses, or they go there, they've been committed, they escape and flee the place, the hospital's called us to get them brought back. So, that's an ongoing, high-volume call for us, but a lot of those people might not be Milton residents, so we may not be dealing with them for that long-term commitment like we are when we go to the houses. And then the second part of your question, we've invested a ton of time and money trying to be proactive, and it really, you know, Chief Wells was chief at the time, I was a deputy chief, we partnered with the National Alliance of Mental Illness, we started working with them, and saying, hey, what can we do? Like, you just look at these trends, not just Milton, but nationally, like, you know, use of force, it was, you know, the numbers of people with mental health that it was used against, for us, you know, people without mental health issues was alarming, you know, we tried to be proactive, so, we partnered with them, we went to a bunch of different initiatives, the, so we partnered with National Alliance of Mental Illness, we worked to get mental health funding through a grant, no cost to the town, so that we could have a clinician in the building. The standard for the One Mind Campaign is, the goal is to see if you can have about 20% of your department, because it's a lot of time, it's a lot of money, trained in crisis intervention training, we're about 95%, and we'd be 100, but for, you're always hiring new people and losing, so, there's like a lag effect, if you lose somebody, you got to, somebody might come on the job, and they might not be able to go to train them for six months or nine months, but we basically are 100%, but for new hires, and they will get it. That's off the charts, the standard's 20%. We train everybody in mental health first aid, so we, we invest a lot so that the officers, we go into the calls, have that background and train the knowledge, we spend a lot training the supervisors in de-escalation stuff through Moab, I've sent officers out of state to be certified to be instructors, so that they can know how to de-escalate these situations before they go bad. And I see the progress, in all honesty, like, I've seen these calls where we used to go that would end up in altercations with these certain individuals, and we're still going those houses, and there's almost like a relationship, they peacefully go in the ambulance with us, where it used to be like a physical altercation. So, that's kind of what the officers are doing, and then we have a community services unit where two officers are assigned, and they work with the domestic violence advocate, they work with the mental health clinician who are civilians, and those officers and those civilians all answer to the same sergeant, and they're kind of like a team, and they follow up on everything, from every mental health call, every domestic, every substance use overdose where, you know, somebody dies, or if somebody, you know, family member, we might go there tonight, say, on a domestic, or a medical, if somebody's fallen down, but, you know, they were drunk at the time, do they have a drinking problem? We'll follow up, you know what I mean? And, so, that's kind of, I think answers your question, but.
Other questions, Ms. Hagerty?
I have a couple. Actually, I just want to say I'm glad to hear that Dare Camp is still a thing, because I definitely attended Dare Camp at C11 in Dorchester. That brought a smile to my face. So, one quick question, just on like the traffic enforcement piece, I definitely get a lot of questions about it, obviously, but what does the, so we have Milton Police in town, we also have a state police barracks in the Blue Hills, what typically does sort of, like, do you guys exchange information, or like have a collaboration on, on that type of thing, or is that an opportunity? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of, you know, your forces are spread thin, we're definitely going to have, it sounds like we're going to have more traffic engineering looked at to help manage, you know, speeds on roadways, but, like, what, I guess what, between Milton Police and the state police, like, what, what does that collaboration look like, and, you know, what would you need to be able to do more with enforcement?
We have a good relationship with the state police, generally, there's really two barracks we deal with, there's obviously the Milton Barracks, and we deal with the self-lost barracks, depending on where in Milton something is, kind of, their jurisdiction's split a little bit on that. Very good relationships, they have very good commanders, at the same time, everybody's respectful of each other's jurisdiction, so to speak, so, anytime we've needed the state police, they've been there for us, and vice versa, sometimes they'll call us for assistance at, you know, Holden's Pond, or something on like a DCR property, you know, common to Blue Hills, you know, somebody's lost or injured up in the mountain, we, we both respond. They're very good if we need, like, the state police, but as much as you think of state police, oh, it's this huge 2,000-person agency, they run two cars out of Milton, and those two cars are responsible from Route 24 in Brockton into Edin King Parkway and like High Park, West Roxbury. So, it's not really you can call them up and say, come over to Pleasant Street and write tickets.
Yeah.
It's not really that relationship, it's more, if we get a lot of complaints, say, on Blue's Parkway, that's their road, we'll work with them and say, hey, we can put some coverage, but it's your road, you know, we're getting these complaints, but they come to us, because the houses are on us, but the roads on them.
Got it.
So, we have a good relationship, they're very responsive, they're very positive, but, like I said, we're kind of respectful of each other's jurisdiction, so to speak, and, you know, a lot of people don't understand which roads are which, like, you know, Route 138 is a state road in terms of DPW, but it's a Milton Police road, it's not a state police road. Route 28, state road for DPW purposes, but it's Milton Police for jurisdiction. So, you know, I think that, we have a good relationship, and I feel we could call and ask them for anything, but we're respectful of, you know, they have other obligations too, and like I said, they have a big area, and they run two cars out of that barracks.
Yeah. So my other question, just, I mean, nationally and even in Massachusetts, you know, there have been incidents, you know, around ICE enforcement in communities. I was wondering what, so, in some of these cases, it's been a question, you know, what, what does police activity versus federal activity look like? And I guess the question, we, we do have immigrant populations in our town, we could have some folks who are undocumented. My question is, what, what could or should residents expect in our town if ICE were here? And what, what does that look like from the Milton PD side?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really had any issues.
Thank God.
Yeah, so, you know, they're two totally different roles, and I understand why, maybe the public may not understand that, and I think a lot of that's just messaging, you know, I work with the Milton, the faith clergy on this issue, we've discussed it at length, and other people, you know, community groups and stuff like that, and, you know, we don't participate, Massachusetts is kind of, it's almost easier for the police, I feel, because it's state law, like, we, we don't hold people on civil detainers. If there's not a judicial warrant, a criminal warrant, we don't get involved. So, at the same time, we, we don't interfere, I mean, ICE could show up here tomorrow, go to, you know, outside a house and, you know, get somebody, like, they probably wouldn't even call us, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, it's hard for me to comment really on what it would look like.
Yeah.
But we haven't really experienced that, you know what I mean? I think, you know, as, if it was to occur, we'd deal with it, you know, I followed all these other ones, you know what I mean, that have occurred, and, you know, that, you know, you see what happened to Worcester, what happened to Providence, and stuff like that. I mean, we kind of plan, we train people, what our role is, what the law is in Massachusetts, should we go to a call of, you know, a raid, or disturbance, or something like that, what we can and can't do, and us basically is, if it's not a criminal warrant, we're not involved, we're not involved in enforcing federal immigration laws. I think everybody understands that, you know what I mean? The other issue would be on the other end, like, but it's the same kind of applicability, we arrest people, we fingerprint them, and, you know, ICE could get that hit and say, oh, that person's wanted, but that doesn't factor into us holding them, if they're eligible bailed, they're bailed out, you know, if they're held and brought to court, they're brought to court, you know what I mean? Like, could I stand outside the courthouse and get them? They could, but we're not involved in that, you know what I mean? So, I just don't want to elaborate too much on their end of it.
Yeah.
Because, one, we haven't really experienced it, and, two, it's just that, you know, really separation kind of, that we don't interfere in, we're not helping, and, you know, I make it very clear to people, like, we don't ask it, we don't ask it when you're being booked there as a prisoner, we don't ask it when you're coming in our front lobby looking for help, you need a restraining order, you need the police, call 911, we don't get involved in immigration staff, we don't care about it, you know, we just want to resolve whatever help you need.
Yep. That's the end of my questions.
Mr. Wells? I have a few, thanks, Chief, and I concur with the Chief. Mr. Milano mentioned this to me when I came back from Idaho, and I can't think in my 40 years since, I don't know an ICE agent, I know, as you know, I know people in law enforcement throughout this Commonwealth thing, I don't know an ICE agent, I don't ever remember ICE being here, you know, what the Chief describes is, someone could get arrested on a warrant, a state warrant, you know, and go to Quincy District Court and get bailed and get picked up by ICE, that could happen, but he would have no control of that, like, ICE, immigration standards isn't a question that's ever asked. It could be a murder, and you wouldn't ask them, you know, you just, and, and I thought, I was trying to think of a couple murders in my time, that they very well may not have been documented, I don't even think we ever, it even came up, but, but I get the, the sense of anxiety that exists.
Yeah.
I hear it from my wife every day, so I get that, but. First off, Chief, I just want to say President Fernandez did mention, you know, the, the presence in the ED, and how important it was, particularly his staff, how concerned they were, and I know that one of your veteran detectives was significantly hurt when he was attacked by a patient there, while he was just going through and suffered a serious head injury, you know, a lot of people don't even know that happened.
Yeah.
I do want to touch on a couple of things before you leave, because I know how you are, and you won't say these, so one thing I want to talk about is the diversity in the makeup of the department. I don't think people have any clue how many ethnic backgrounds, how many languages are spoken, how, how many females are on the job. The police department is probably the most diverse agency that exists in this town, it is, they have the capability to handle people that can come through with almost any type of background, educational status, anything, and deal with, because of the makeup of the men and women who work there, and that's a credit to a lot of effort to make that, I don't think people ever even think of that, you know, when they think, well, the police department. And that's, that's a very much, I've always said, a police department should be reflective of the community, and this police department is very much reflective of this community.
Yeah, I agree.
I did have, happened to have a meeting with Judge Colvin two weeks ago, he summoned all the legislators for this region to, to come to a meeting with him. Quincy District Court is the fifth busiest court in this Commonwealth, I don't think people realize, particularly in mental health and DV, domestic violence goes on in there every single day, the building itself is an absolute dump, it's an ICE war, you know, you worked there for years as the court prosecutor, he, we were, made, we made aware that they're going to build a new Quincy District Court, it's going to take five years, but they rented the old Patriot Ledger Building over on Ground Colony, it's going to take 60 weeks to, I can't believe they're going to turn a building into a courthouse with everything, but they're going to do that. People don't go to the courthouse just to get a rein, they go there for mental health issues, they go there for substance abuse, the line at the domestic violence window in that office some days on a Monday is like, so long, those advocates and what they do is really critical to the communities that they service, us being one of them, and I'm grateful to Judge Gold, and especially Speaker Mariano for finally to do this. Last, the last two things I want to talk about are your detectives. I don't think people realize, you know, you and I both know the incident on the Parkway and Marita her suicide, I don't think anyone can imagine the atrocity and what it's like to deal with something of that magnitude, and that's not the first incident of this type this year. We heard John Driscoll, who lives on Randolph Ave, who just happened to come upon that fatality on Randolph Ave, what it's like for those first responders to go home and have to carry that, and then on the same night, the same officers have to go to the Worf to a multiple shooting at the same night. It talks a great deal to the commitment of those people, the men and the investigators, everyone, what they put forth in protecting the citizens of this town, a lot of people don't think about that, they don't recognize it, they don't understand it, but I get it, I understand it, I'm very grateful to them for that. And finally, I also want to mention the two SROs, Chris Potts and, and Maria. System here, with the teachers, the staff, the students, when you talk about Dare Camp, Dare Camp fills in a day, right? Two weeks, one day, it's over.
Minutes, five minutes.
By the way, you got, it's five minutes, you have to be online, and in five minutes, it's full, they've taken the maximum they can take. That's a credit to the work ethic and the philosophy of a police. That's a credit to the work ethic and the philosophy of a police department that truly cares about its citizens. So I probably could go on and on, but I'll leave with that.
Yeah, no, if I can elaborate just briefly on that, I agree 100% with you. You know, it's a pretty broad, like, you know, those serious incidents, like you said, like, you know, there's a kid on our job who, I mean, he's brand new, you know, and he's working Randolph Ave with three people killed. He did a double that night. He's down the WAF with three people shot. I mean, that's a lot of trauma for a brand new kid. Not brand new, but he's been on a short time. You know, he just happened to be doing a double that night. But, you know, it really goes the whole spectrum, you know, you said the murder-suicide, you have, you know, the first responders, those officers responding and see people with grave injuries and they're trying to treat them medically while dealing with the chaos of what's going on, who did this. You know, and then you said you bring in these detectives who unfortunately get called in for all the serious incidents, so they see everyone, whether they're working or not. But, you know, I'll say right through, like, another shout out that is deserving is the auxiliary fire, you know. I know they use term auxiliary fire, I feel like they come up more for the police and, you know, because they kind of come through Mema, like, those guys unpaid come out to all these serious incidents, they put up lights, they stay there all night with my staff. Like, I think, like, just like you said, there's so many people behind the scenes that like help out and make these things go right. And if you look at all these serious incidents, you know, I know the worst on investigation, but every other one's been soft, you know what I mean? Like these, from the, you know, a very serious shooting of a woman, you know, another murderer, another shooting, a lot of these car crashes, you know, we had a hit and run, OUI, like, they solved these mailbox thefts, you know, Town Hall was getting crushed with thefts of money through the treasurer's office, like, they've solved a ton of these. They take time and I don't think people ever see the work. You see the news flash for two days and then these guys work on it for hundreds of hours. So I think overall, everyone, from the first responders to the detectives to, like I said, these auxiliary firemen that come out and, you know, put up lights in the middle of the night and get called out at four in the morning, you know what I mean? Like, a lot of credit to go around and, you know, they really do the hard work. I have the easy work, I'm sitting here on a Tuesday night, you know what I mean? They're out doing that and it's appreciated. And like I said, it's just even people in the community, you know, there's a lot of good community members that reach out and support the police, you know, some leaders and some neighborhood groups and stuff like that. People, you know, I know you have ties, but I say this sincerely, you know, Martha Vedoni, like, that Copeland Foundation has been instrumental, like, this gets kids off on a positive relationship with the police and, you know, those values carry forward 10, 20 years from now. So, you know, I like to hear your experience as a kid that you remember that, you know what I mean? So I think there's a lot of credit to go around.
Well, spread it to them, they deserve it.
So just a couple of your second.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. So I, again, I just thank you for coming out and, you know, I want to echo a lot of what Mr. Wells just said in terms of, you know, the force that we have, the representation that's on that force, your commitment to things like de-escalation training, figuring out how to have a police force that looks like the community that it serves and reacts in ways that try to solve problems rather than create problems. I think it's a huge credit to you and it's a credit to all of the men and women that serve under you. Ms. Hegarty brought up the ICE question and I know we're going to, we may talk a little bit more about this, but this is something that you and I have had a conversation about with a couple of times. And I think, you know, it struck me that you went out of your way in your comments just now to emphasize how people should reach out to you if they're feeling unsafe, if they're in a domestic violence situation, if they're in a mental health crisis, that they should be able to reach out to Milton Police without fear that their immigration status is going to be a question. And I applaud you for doing that. When I became chair, you were one of the first people that I met with and I had kind of started asking these questions and you, so I guess the question that I always had was, if somebody calls Milton Police and says there's three masked guys that are like, you know, holding up, you know, that are, that are on a street corner here, you know, with another guy and there's, they haven't coordinated with, ICE has not coordinated with you, how do you respond to something, to a call like that? And I know that there was a sort of a similar incident and it turned out to be ICE. But I'd be curious to hear your, both, how do you respond to that? And also, have you seen a trend of decreasing cooperation with, you know, federal law enforcement, with MPD, not the state, but at the federal level?
Yeah, you know, if that call comes in and like you said, a call came in along that lines, you know, we respond in the theory of it could be really anything. It could be a bad actor dressed up. It didn't come in as, you know, those calls, depending on how they come in, you know, specifically what's said in the call is very relevant, but, you know, if it comes in, you know, there's three guys, you know, with guns and they just grab some guy, I mean, priority and just honestly, you still know when you get there. And then depending on what you have, you know, that's kind of the path you go down. If it's ICE, it wouldn't involve us, like, we just kind of would probably reassure if there's spectators or family members or stuff like that of what's going on and what they can and can't do and stuff like that, we would just try and help de-escalate it. I'll say generally, I have not seen any decrease in cooperation with the feds. I feel, and I don't want to speak to ICE because like I said, we haven't really had that, but almost always, almost, you know, I don't say always, but I feel like whether it's federal, whether it's state, whether it's local, usually if a police department's coming in and they're going to grab somebody or they're doing surveillance, we get that call in advance. And I feel that's still occurring at all those levels, local police, state police, federal agencies, you know, and I'm making this up, but it was the DEA watching a house for a drug thing where, you know, the person might be Milton, but the drugs might be getting sold and lol, you know, it's really not like we're investigating them. But yeah, if it's Boston and they want somebody for a crime in Boston and they think he's staying at his mother's house in Milton, I've never seen them really surprise us like that. I feel like we get those calls. Once in a while, we don't get the call, whether it's an oversight, you know, a mistake, you know what I mean? Like I said, that did happen once recently where the feds came in and they looked for a guy and just, we didn't get that call. Sometimes they might follow somebody and they don't think they're going to grab somebody and then all of a sudden they see the person they wanted. They might have been coming looking for, you know, just stake out the place and then saw the person. So some of those things can happen spontaneously, but I'd say there's no decline. I'd say it's the same relationship and the same information, Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the members?
No, I just want to say I agree with the chief. Like, it's, it's not an exact science, but as I said, I, and I'm saying this publicly to the residents tonight, I would not worry about ICE coming into this, it's just, I don't see it, unless it's a criminal type thing or some, I, and I've followed these, and I sit on a social service, on the Board of Social Service Agency in Boston Immigration and much of what we do, I look at the ones that happen and how they happen and the, I don't see, especially in the part of Milton Police, but I just don't, I don't see it. Anything could happen and the chief's right, like feds, you know, they're going to tell you a week ahead of time? No, but if they're coming at five in the morning, indictments, federal indictments are usually sealed. I'm thinking of two cases that I can think of in town recently, you know, in the past few years where feds came in and made an arrest story in the morning and they call you like an hour before and say, hey, we're going to this address, we're going to, we're all set, we don't need anybody, we're just telling you. So you don't get that call to come, you know, there's a term in police called blue on blue. You don't want people, you know, pointing guns at each other going, I'm good, I'm good, you know, like, that's, it's a situation you don't want to have happen. So and the chief's right, they may not do it all the time because it's not an exact science, but for the most part, they want to try and give you some heads up before they do it.
Mr. Milano, you have a?
Sorry, I cut.
No, no, I was just going to say, to give the chief the opportunity, if there's, you know, through the budget, we talked about some needs, if you wanted to speak briefly about, you know, kind of where the department's needs are over the next couple of years so that at least we share that with the board as well. I'm just saying, to discuss it publicly.
Yeah, you know, the most pressing need, I told you Nick and I told the board committee is really like, we need IT staff, like, you know, I don't mean to be critical, I think it's a joke that we don't have it, like, we have no IT in a police department, it's insane. It just, it affects everything from, you know, cameras to computers, like, at the same time I'm saying that all our crime shift into technology, you know, we have capital money sitting for body one cameras, that's never going to be implemented till we have a tech person. It's just not going to happen. So like, money's been sitting there for a couple of years now. So I think that's a dire need. You know, generally the police station, you know, we have an increase, we're not really shrinking, we're just kind of staying like a level department really in my whole time as chief. So I really say that IT is the most critical. The building needs some work and stuff, but they, you know, the Capitol Committee's been good about that, you know, they stepped up with the EOC, they stepped up with some radio infrastructure, they've stepped up, we haven't started the work yet with that booking room and detainee cell area. We have to do some updates that are required, that just, our building's too old. So the problem in our police department is we've just outgrown it. And it's not because we have more cops, it's just because of these positive things, you know, we got a mental health condition and then you have no way to put it, we got a domestic violence advocate, we have no way to put him. So, you know, there's restrictions on evidence that didn't exist, where we used to have one evidence room, now we have three different areas, you know, and then every area has to have its own security and cameras and, you know, swipe cards. And so, you know, with triage and things, you know, you know, they used to record people with a camcorder on the desk, you know, now you have an interview room and you have to have a backup interview, one's secure, one's not secure, depending on who you're interviewing. So we need more space and we're doing some interior modifications kind of to create that within the existing walls. But I feel like the town's been good on that. It's really probably technology staff and is the most dire need that I highlight today.
I've seen the work firsthand that's going down, you know, and the reorg that's happening in that station, so.
Do you know about the earmark? Do you know about the earmark for mental health workout?
No.
Okay. See, there is a, we did secure an earmark, I can't remember how much, is it $25,000? It's $25,000 for you on my state budget to increase your capability for mental health services for the upcoming year.
Thank you, that's good.
That's a, and it's a good point about IT staff, so we can take that under advisement.
He is right, which is kind of unique. I know the previous Chief Wells, we were the first IT, first IT existed was Jim Scroyd and it was in the police department and they preempted him from us to come over here to start IT and the police department never got a person back.
Never got a back. And I'm a realist, I get you, you guys have to look out for many departments, you know what I mean, and many needs. I totally get it, you know, so we survive either way, like, we live within our means because we have to, you know what I mean? So I respect it, I don't, like, I get, you know, everybody has a priority, you know, I understand that, so I take no offense, but just the jobs evolved, you know, I mean, everything, you don't write citations anymore if you give somebody a speeding ticket on Randolph Ave, it's computer swiped and after the registration, everything is computers. So you really need like an internal IT person, like Chief Wells said, we had a part-time one that kind of somehow would shuffle to Town Hall and then never replace. So we went from a half to none when we needed a full along, you know.
Does the school department have their own IT?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right? I would assume, yeah.
They have a staff.
So maybe we should talk about making that a priority in the FY '27 budget?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I would be remiss if I didn't say also a thank you, MPD plays a critical role in all of the parades and celebrations that we have as a town. This year when the theater group won, you know, we turned a parade around immediately for them, they were out for the pride parade again. And it's really, you know, makes the world tall to kids to see the, you know, the police and fire out, you know, with the sirens and everything else, it makes, really makes it official and it, the SROs, as Mr. Wells mentioned, are fabulous and do a really thoughtful job of making those events special.
I agree, yeah, we're happy to do it all the time.
Any further questions for our chief?
No, it's nine o'clock.
Just thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you, everybody.
He is here for the next agenda item though.
Oh, it's a quick one.
We have, oh, our increase to disability parking violations from $100 to $200 and double parking from 25 to 50 to be effective August 1, 2025. I guess I'll turn this over to Chief King.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Basically, I kind of looked at all the parking offenses and, you know, fines compared to other similar sized communities and issues going on in town and complaints we get. And I really just focused in quickly on two safety issues. You know, our goal here is compliance, this isn't like a revenue generating mechanism, but, you know, part of compliance is fines as a mechanism of compelling compliance, you know what I mean? And the two basically issues, one is disabled person parking and the issue with that is, you know, people violating that are forcing disabled people to find alternative locations that they may not be able to, you know, access because there's no ramp there, they may not be able to go the distance they need to go to the place they're going. So that creates a real hazard for those individuals. The other is double parking, there's been an increase in that, people probably see it, you know, Uber Eats, DoorDash, people double parking. When you do that, not only are you grid locking traffic, but you're kind of forcing the cars to cross over the oncoming traffic to get by them. So without revamping everything, we really focused in on those two, we felt that both safety issues and, you know, the fines were pretty minimal. You know, we were $25 on the double parking, you know, and I recommend that goes to 50 and then on the handicap, I recommend it goes, it was 100, I recommend it goes to 200. And it's really just to kind of nudge people to comply and take this seriously and deal with two issues that I'll say are both safety related and I'll also say are both probably two of my most common complaints.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the increase from 100 to, on increased disability parking violations from 100 to 200, double parking from 25 to 50 to be effective August 1, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hegarty. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And please thank you, very efficient, I wish he was 50 hours a week parking enforcement, Jerry, who was also a member of the Zoe Fire, was over there again on his own time tonight. He's done an unbelievable job and especially in the business districts.
He has, and I, you know, I mentioned this to Mr. Milano, you know, I know you get a lot of complaints parking the business and East Milton and that, and I tell you, if you look at the data, Jerry's one of the top performers, the parking enforcement officer in like the people that process the tickets. And the only places that do more than him are like Big, like tourist Plymouth, Bridgewater State College, where colleges kind of hammer all those poor kids, you know what I mean? Like, Jerry, he's not hammering people, but it just shows he's out there doing his job, you know, consistently and, you know, it's kind of probably an unappreciated job, but I credit him for it.
He does it with a smile too, he's very personable, he's very, he does.
Wonderful. Thank you again, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So item number 10, fiscal year end updates.
Number nine.
Oh, sorry, nine, I skipped it. Request for Winter Valley Building 6 Building Permit Fee Reduction, Mr. Milano.
Go ahead, you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Ned Corcoran is here to represent Winter Valley and has a short presentation that he would like that describes the background around what he is requesting on behalf of his claim.
Okay, Mr. Corcoran, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Zoll, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here. I think it's the first, first time I've been before the select board in a couple of years and it's a lot of new faces since the last time I was here. I think Mr. Wells was the, is the lone holdover from previous experience. I know I'm fairly regular at the planning board, zoning board of appeals, but it's less often than I'm, than I'm here. And I appreciate your taking the time to entertain this request. For the record, my name is Ned Corcoran, I am an attorney here in Milton and I am representing Winter Valley. I've been representing Winter Valley since 2020 when we started the process of planning for the development of a sixth building on its campus. If you can move to the next slide, that'd be great. And we brought Article 48 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting was to amend the underlying zoning which had capped the number of units and buildings that could be allowed on the Winter Valley site to expand to allow an additional building containing 36 affordable senior housing units. There was some height and setback relief that was also part of that, that effort and the height was going to be consistent with the main building at Fuller Village. Next slide, please. Winter Valley was created in approximately 1980. It is one of two nonprofits that were formed at that time to develop projects within what was, is known as the D1 Resident Zone, the other being Home Inc. was, is known as the D1 Resident Zone, the other being Home Inc. Home Inc. operates on a different nonprofit model with small, you know, duplexes and trifect- triplexes. Winter MRE, the Milton Residents for the Elderly, which operates Winter Valley and, sorry, I'm just.
Enquity House.
Enquity House is, is the other. Enquity, between Enquity and Winter Valley, they have approximately 300 units between the two, all of which are affordable. It's a nonprofit that operates. Most of the units are subsidized by HUD and we, I think I had a typo as I looked in my letter that I sent to the board. Between Enquity House and Winter Valley, they actually have 64% of the total number of affordable units that were in the town at the time. Fuller Village is actually, also has a significant number of affordable units and so they make up the other, make up substantially the balance of the affordable units that existed at the time that we went to town meeting. Next slide, please. And as I say, Milton in 2021 had a total of 477 affordable units. As you know, that number is about to change significantly with the 940B projects that have been assaulting, I would say assaulting the town. Winter Valley had 34% of the total, Enquity House had another 30% and then Fuller Village 30%. So, between these three nonprofit entities, 94% of the, all of the affordable units are located. There's a significant need for additional units and town meeting recognized that when they approved the expansion of the zoning for Winter Valley in 2021. Next. Do a couple of quick slides sort of showing where it's located. This is the Winter Valley campus. It is almost across the street from Town Hall. You go 200 yards up south on Canton Avenue. The entrance is on Canton Avenue and goes up the hill and sort of deep back. It's a total of 24 acres. There are currently five buildings. The last was built in the early 1990s pursuant to a 1989 zoning amendment that allowed Building Five, a 32-unit building. And the idea is to build behind Building Five on an area of property that was under a 30-year conservation restriction, going back to the, the formation of Winter Valley. That 30-year restriction expired, was expiring in roughly 2021. And so, at that point, the planning went into place for the, for the new building on that portion of the property that was subject to the 30-year restriction. So, next. And this is sort of the, from the town's map. And if you go to the next one, well, want to go back for a second. You could see the, towards the lower right is Building Five. There's this long sort of panhandle piece that heads, goes down to the southeast in this. And that is where the 30-year restriction and then the furthest end, and you'll see it in a later slide, is actually a portion of the property that has a permanent restriction on it. So, next slide. One of the significant issues that we ran into as part of the development post-town meeting, but dealing with both conservation restriction and the planning board, was the fact that they, the location of this Building Six, there is a roughly 5,000 square foot isolated wetland in the middle of the property that we had to address with the Conservation Commission. We entered into a significant agreement with the Concom and ultimately with the select board to improve the, act, the drainage into the town-owned wetland that's on the corner of Highland Street and Canton Avenue. That's a large wetland that receives flow from Upper Highland Street and Canton Avenue. There's a, if you observe where the driveway is, it enters from Canton Avenue, there's a white sort of area. That's actually an area where we are paying to expand that wetland on the town's property and it's part of the mitigation for the impact to wetlands. There's an additional payment of, into the town's tree preservation fund. And the total wetland mitigation, including addressing the issue with the tree mitigation is almost $100,000. It's a fairly significant cost that was not anticipated at the start of the project, but one that, you know, that Winter Valley is having to take on. Next, please. This is the, you can see, this is just a map showing the different portions of the property. Building Five is shown right in the middle. You've got the 30-year temporary conservation restriction area, which is the location of the new building. Further down is the permanent CR. To the right, above that, is the BI built, Milton's Hospital Property. That is the location of the new memory care facility that is about to be going into construction probably early next year. We went through a rezoning and four-year process with the planning board and the Conservation Commission to get that approved. I was representing the developer in that case. And then, on the other side, the Tamposys, the two at the top, that's the 40B. Those two properties have been combined for the purpose of a 40B project that is currently under appeal to the Superior Court. Next. And then finally, as far as an aerial view, the new building as it sits sort of at the bottom where approximate to Building Five. So, one more slide and I'll get to the meat of what we're, oh, excuse me. So, this is a rendering, this was the architect's version of the new building. It is a significant building. It's three full stories, it's 45 feet in height. It's got 38, 36 units, each independent living, age restricted. And of the 36, 34 are being, will be rent subsidized by HUD and the other two are affordable. So, they're all, 100%, they're all, they are all affordable with different sorts of funds available to residents in terms of how they access rent subsidy, et cetera. It is a significant building, was preliminarily designed before the town adopted the engineering, the environmental stretch code. And that process has added a significant component to what was already a very expensive building. The estimate at the time was at about 12 or 13 million. And with the, with the modifications associated with the stretch code, we're looking at 18 million just in terms of the, of the cost of construction of the building. Never mind the other work being done on-site, including the wetland replication, other engineering, driveway expansion elements of the project as well. Next slide, please. So, to the punchline, the total construction cost today estimated 18,580,000 where the original estimate was 13.9. So, approximately a 25% increase in cost, generally driven by the issues associated with the, the energy stretch code. And HUD has really raised an issue with that. This is a project that is funded substantially by HUD. We were, we were fortunate to get in line for HUD funding once we got through the, the combined process of town meeting, conservation restriction, Conservation Commission approval and site plan approval with the planning board. And they're now at a point where they've, they've engineered the project, they've designed the project, they've contracted bid, ready to go. And the, the building permit fee, based on a, per dollar, per thousand dollars cost, today is $277,000. That's a significant component of a tight budget. We're requesting that the board vote to reduce that fee to reflect the fee that it would have existed if we had not been required to, to move forward under this energy stretch code. And that fee would be $207,000. Still a fairly significant number, one that we think more than adequately would cover the town's oversight of the cost of design and construction going forward. The stretch code does impose on the owner significant additional sort of reporting and oversight itself so that some of the work that normally might be, have to be done by town inspectors, there'll be self-reporting done by hired consultants who will be reporting to both HUD, the owner and the town with respect to its compliance with all the building requirements. And so, that's the request. This is an unusual request, we know. As I indicated, MRE is a nonprofit and it provides a significant service to the town in terms of the type of people who live there and whose rent is subsidized. I'm aware of one other similar type of issue. I actually represented back in the, in the aughts, 2007, eight. I represented a developer who was working with extra space storage to plan and develop seven units within the two mill buildings that are straddle the river and as part of a Chapter 91 license process that we went through with the state at the time. We went through zoning and permitting for a new 14-unit mixed juice building that would have had a 135-seat restaurant, 1,000 square feet of retail, butted right up against Adam Street, right where the new handicap accessible ramp is going to be installed by the MBTA. For reasons substantially associated with the 2008 economic downturn, that building never got built. We had a groundbreaking. The building never got built. And I can't tell you how many people in town have asked me, whatever happened to that building? Why can't we develop it? Why can't we come back and go forward? All I can tell you is that extra space storage is an $8 billion REIT based in Salt Lake City, Utah, and they care about storage. And the notion of putting a building in front of their storage building freaks them out a little bit that people won't be able to see the storage building and then not have a reason to stop.
I remember a town meeting approved a liquor license for that location.
Right. We went through, we, you know, we went through one of those one-off home rule petitions for liquor license that was approved. It was extended, the legislation was extended to allow it to remain in place. We twice extended the building permit under the Permit Extension Acts in 2012, 2014, but extra space storage at the end of the day just has not been able to see their way to working with a developer. In that case, there was a surprise element to the cost of the overall project, which was when, when new water and sewer connections were made, the INI fee, the inflow and, just blanking on the other, what the other I is, but there was a fee, was a new fee in town that was associated with the tying into the sewer system. And in that case, we requested and the select board agreed to waive the INI fee because it was a surprise and it was going to, at the time, would jeopardize project. I think the sewer connection was done because the seven units and the two mill buildings were built out. They were never converted to condos. They are operated as apartments by extra space. They are rented, but they, had the new building been built, they would have been condominiums. But, the sewer connection was made and it was made as part of an improvement to the sewer as it was coming down Adam Street at the time. So, that is a, obviously a different fee. This is the first time that I'm aware of that, that anyone has requested to waive, but based on MRE status as a nonprofit, based on the issues and concerns that HUD has raised relative to the overall cost of the project, it's one of those few areas that we see we have the ability to do something. And so, we're asking this board if it would compromise on the total of the, of the building, the building permit fee to the cost that it would have been had the, been designed and built under, under the former building code.
Pre-stretch code.
Right. And so, with that, I'll pause and open to questions and happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Mr. Milano, do you have any context that you want to add from the town's side?
Sure. So, you know, Ned and I met and had a conversation with himself and Sarah McLaren, also a rep from the contractor.
Right.
And I provided some feedback then and I've shared that same feedback with the board in terms of, just as a first, the building department doesn't, we don't waive fees. So, this is, you know, I think to Ned's point, it is a unique request. It's not one we've, we've encountered before. The only fees we don't charge are for municipal or school projects, so we don't charge building permit fees for the new fire station, the new East Milton station, any projects that go on in the school department or elsewhere. So, other projects, we've not had this request before. I'll just note two other pieces that the Affordable Housing Trust is contributing $400,000 to this project. And the other thing is we are in active litigation currently with.
MRE.
With MRE based on, or a charitable exemption that they've applied for and has been denied by the town for both Winter Valley and for Enquity House. So, the town has successfully defended that at the appellate tax board and appellate court and for fiscal 2019 taxes and then was filed again by Winter Valley and Enquity for fiscal 20s taxes. We were successful at the appellate tax board and that case is still kind of lingering. So, that's some broader context. The other item I'll just mention is if the board is interested in exploring this and having further discussions, I think Ned, it might be helpful to know in terms of a timeline if a building permit has been, I don't think submitted yet, but what would be a timeline that would be helpful to you folks? And then maybe if the board's interested in having further conversation, we can, a couple of us can work on it and bring something back to the board for consideration.
I think the, the building application process is imminent.
Okay.
I know that there's been communication with the building department and they are finalizing designs as we speak. I don't know specifically when, but I think pretty close.
So, one option could be, Mr. Chair, is to come back and add this as an agenda item on our special meeting on July 30th for follow-up so that, a little time to work through it if that's something the board wants to think about a little bit more instead of making a decision anyway tonight.
Okay. Mr. Wells, you have a thought?
I can live with that, if you can. Unless you want to make a decision tonight, I mean.
I don't, I'm not feeling, but I think, you know, we just had a nice, long presentation. I don't know if folks have questions that they'd like to ask Mr. Corcoran about the presentation.
No, no questions for me. I think I'm pretty well informed from the town's side as well as Attorney Corcoran's side.
Yeah, I mean, my, my question is, is I, I forget the answer to this, but are town-owned buildings subject to the stretch code? Any new public buildings?
I believe the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
But, I believe that was a factor in some of the costs that Sean O'Rourke was talking about.
Got it. Right. That's why I was like, I should probably know this, but.
Go ahead, you go first because you got it all.
So, I know, it's just a question for Mr. Corcoran. You know, original cost estimate 13,9, then it's now 18,5, so roughly 25% increased cost. What was the driver there? Was there like a singular driver from the stretch code that, that made that cost go up or was there, was it a host of things? I'm just curious about what the costs were there.
I don't have a specific.
Well, that delta is greater than 30%. It's not 25%. So, I would assume that, you know, some of that's general cost escalation and some of that is stretch code.
That was going to be a part of the question.
Right?
Yeah, I think there's also, there's also costs associated with tariffs. They're still, you know, trying to price where they are.
What year did?
But I can break down.
What year was the cost estimate developed?
I think it was, well, right around 2021 as we were heading into town meeting and working initially with HUD for HUD approval for the, for the overall project. But I can, I can get a more of a detailed breakdown.
Can I ask a different, relevant question, a more relevant question? How big a dent does this new building put on the waiting list for Winter Valley or MRE total? It's one of the biggest things people ask me about. I'm on the list for Winter Valley, yeah, but I'm for three.
It puts a pretty good dent on it. I don't know how big the list is, but I know that they've been, the need has.
The need is definitely there.
Is there and it's been there. And because of the 30-year restriction on the conservation restriction on that piece of property, they were, they were limited to their ability to expand.
Right.
And as soon as they And as soon as they got through that, we were getting through that 30 years, that's when we put the plan to go to town meeting. In fact, they were originally, they were originally looking at a variance process and when they hired me and I, my thought was, let's go to town meeting. You know, let's, let's, this is, this town meeting ought to vote on this. And so we did it as a citizen's petition that was supported at town meeting.
If you didn't get this, sorry, if you don't get this, how much does it delay you?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I know that there's scrapping for, so I don't, I don't know the total bucket, but, you know, what the needs are, where there's a shortfall. But I know that this is one area that HUD said, hey, you should be able to push.
Because one of my concerns is if we do it for one, then they get in line and we get like a, and it just keeps.
Set in precedent.
We can't, that's my, I mean, I sympathize and I know the need. I want to see it get done. I just worry about the repercussions if we do it.
On this project, 70,000 out of, you know, 18 and a half million doesn't, doesn't appear to be a lot in the cost. Do you know of or can you share other places where cost savings are being looked at?
I'm sure I can. I can't at the moment.
Okay.
I mean, they've designed this building to be as efficient from a cost design and construction perspective as they can.
Yeah. So I am curious just in terms of like the overall costs. I mean, it seems like this stretch code is being blamed for probably a whole bunch of things, including the stretch code, but also including tariffs and just general escalation and costs for construction from 2021 to now. It's four years.
Interest rates, obviously.
Yeah. And so I'm, you know, and as somebody who has a firm belief that climate change is very real and that we should be planning for it, I don't love how we're throwing the energy stretch code here under the bus when there's a whole host of factors. So I would like to see a little bit more of an explanation about the costs, like what were specifically related to the stretch code versus tariffs, which we know are driving up costs and other inflation that we've seen since 2021. I'm, I don't like the precedent of reducing a permit fee, particularly if we're going to single up the energy stretch code as the culprit for increased costs, because I think that opens up Pandora's box for folks coming in and asking for reductions in fees because they want to build something that's more climate-friendly. So I'm fine with if we want to gather a little more information about this and then bring it back to the 30th discussion, if that works for other folks.
I'm fine with it and I really think we should have a discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust. I mean, I think you're the, am I right? Are you the only project that's gotten money? The only, I don't think they've given any money to any other.
Not to a project.
Not to a housing project. I don't think so.
And 400K is a big chunk of change.
I know. So I'm just thinking off the top of my head.
And it might be a way to say, costs have increased, so we are requesting more money rather than blaming it on any one particular factor.
Yeah.
The global factors be enough rather than a specific factor.
And it's also, you know, just to, just to see, like pick it apart a little bit and collaborate and have like a full, a full look at the components of the, of the bump up, the four and a half million or whatever, in the escalation. It just, you know, to, it probably is incumbent upon, you know, the project proponent to, you know, give, give a transparent look at the books if they're coming back to ask for a break or for money, just to see, you know, in which way we can collaborate to help.
Yeah.
It's good to, it's good to offer a potential solution, but I think we need to figure out what is the right solution for the town, but also recognizing that we are really in need of this type of housing.
I agree.
For the residents of this town and that we're committed to collaborating to find a solution.
You're right there. There are people sitting in wherever they live tonight, waiting desperately to get the call to move in here.
Yeah.
So full disclosure, my brother was a director there for 30 years, so I understand all about MRE, so.
Mr. Milano, did you?
I was just going to say that if it's really, it sounds like it's more of deferring this to the Affordable Housing Trust more so than it is a Select Board action at this time, that the grants that they make or don't make are really up to the Affordable Housing Trust. So it doesn't necessarily demand a follow-up from the Select Board. We could keep track of it and report back if there's any need. But in the meantime, if the board's open to it, we could request that, you know, Attorney Corcoran follow up with Affordable Housing Trust and take it from there.
I think that's a good solution.
I think we can. That was on the AHT agenda in our last call was the distribution of this, so.
The same thing?
Yeah.
Really? Did you vote on?
The $400,000.
Not the fee, the $400,000 and how it could impact affordability.
I think that, I think that's a good solution.
Was there a final vote for it?
No.
Or was that the, okay.
So the $400,000 was awarded in 2019.
It's already been awarded, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If anything additional would be new.
So I think that's a good solution and I would encourage Mr. Corcoran, you know, having some of those additional details for the Affordable Housing Trust to understand what the cost escalation is there. They're not, they're not strangers to the costs of buildings and I think they would appreciate a detailed look at where the, where the costs have grown. But I think that's, and Mr. Daley is the representative of the Affordable Housing Trust, you think that's a good solution?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good solution.
I think they have money.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
I'm making that as a motion. So I'll make a motion that we refer this to the Affordable Housing Trust to review. Do you want to? How do you want it? Just to?
To review and consider?
Yeah, for consideration, yeah, for review and consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm trying to make it short and sweet. It's 9:30.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we will see how quickly we can move.
Right. Just tell me where we are.
Mr. Milano, fiscal year-end updates and transfers.
You got five seconds. Go ahead.
Sure. The books are closed. The, so we had a meeting of the Select Board Finance Committee on July 11th, maybe?
Yep.
July 11th and reported back on the fiscal year-end. As I had been updating the board all along, revenues looked strong and closed strong. We ended the year $3.6 million, $3.6 million in revenue over our budget estimate. So as we think about free cash, this is some of the very beginning foundation of how we'll arrive at our free cash calculation. As previously discussed, interest income, which is going to be more one-time transient, not consistent, revenues nearly 800, over $800,000 over budget. We've had also some one-time payments related to large building projects that are, that would start, got permitted in fiscal '25 and also some payments of some outstanding prior tax bills that had been lagging in payment. In terms of expenditures across the budget, we'll have about a million-dollar turnback in underspent budgets from departments having vacancies, not utilizing their full appropriation. So we appreciate.
Departments on the town side.
On the town side, yes. Good clarification. Departments that did not spend to their every last dollar. As we fill positions, we expect that number to decline over time. We did exhaust all but $4,000 of the reserve fund. That reserve fund was $1,265,000. A million went to the Milton School Department. The balance went to Snow and Ice and a few other smaller expenditures. We did balance the DPW budget, which was in negative due to Snow and Ice with the reserve fund. And we balanced the health insurance budget, which was in deficit through appropriations from other departments that had underspent, particularly the legal department budget, our general insurance budget and the Select Board budget. The full outline of all the actual transfers and the money-moving lines was in the packet. Those have been approved and fiscal '25 is, for all intents and purposes, closed. And now we're truly in fiscal '26 in earnest. That's my update unless the Finance Committee members had anything else to add.
We did a lot of signing.
Do you want a motion on this?
I don't think we need a motion.
Just a report.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Moving on to item 11, discussion update approval Milton budget coordination.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a motion to approve, to approve, to appoint Leroy Walker to the Milton Budget Coordination Committee.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's a near term, oh, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Would we like to make a motion on item 12, liquor license zones?
I'm going to abstain on that one because I'll be voting on that in the House.
Okay. And Mr. Milano, do you want to?
I was just going to say, I did tell the board I would have a more official map produced. We did not complete that. So if the board's comfortable with what I had prepared, then we'll just finalize that and submit that to the state and the board's already voted to that effect, so.
We made some additions to that map, I think, in the, so, yeah, I'm fine with that if we've made those additions.
Okay.
I was fine with the additions that we made at the last meeting.
Do we have a motion then or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the identified zones for potential future liquor licenses to be incorporated into House Bill 4089.
I second it.
All right. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion approval, Town Council and Labor Council. Mr. Milano, we just had that meeting. Is there much to add at the moment?
Well, two pieces, Mr. Chair. So I shared with the board that we've, so overall, we progressed on two tracks in terms of Town Council and Labor Council, taking Labor Council first. We interviewed all the firms that applied for Labor Council. We had five applications from Clifford &amp; Kenny, KP Law, Mead Talam and Costa, Harrington Heap and Murphy Hesse Tumi and Lehane. We interviewed the Labor Council firms with myself, Assistant Town Administrator Nick Connors, HR Director Carl Laffidi, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Director of Public Works Marina Fernandez and the Library Director Will Adamsick. Based on the outcome of the interviews and reference checks, we internally would recommend transitioning Labor Council. So currently, those services are provided by MHTL through Andy Wa. We're recommending that we move Labor Council services to the firm Clifford &amp; Kenny. Our main attorney would be Attorney Jamie Kenny, who we're familiar with through some special counsel work that they have done previously for the town. And I think that the firm is well-positioned to support Milton. Deep experience on, they only do labor. They're not a Town Council firm, so they only focus on labor. Deep experience in terms of public safety bargaining and issues, civil service issues in particular, but all employee matters, labor relations, personnel policies, training. Both Nick and Carla have attended training that the firm has put on around workplace investigations that has already added to our capacity in town. So that is the recommendation of myself and the rest of the members of the interview panel for Labor Council. So that would be if the board's open to voting on that, that certainly a vote the board can take this evening. And I've communicated with Attorney Kenny that I was going to make this recommendation. I spoke with Attorney Wa today as well and we would line up an introduction of her and of the firm at an opportunity at a future meeting, so.
Any questions on the Labor Council side? Do I have a motion on the Labor?
So this will become Labor, new Labor Council for the town?
Correct.
So you can move to approve the recommendation?
So I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Town Administrator.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then second item, Mr. Milano.
So similarly for Town Council, we had four firms apply, excuse me, KP Law, Murphy Hesse Tumi and Lehane, Mead Talam and Costa and Harrington Heap. We had an interview panel comprised of myself, again, Nick Connors, and then we asked Will Adamsick as well, Library Director, and then a number of other representatives. We have the Planning Board Chair, the Chair of the Board of Appeals Kathleen O'Donnell, I'm sorry, Meredith Hall from the Planning Board, obviously, Town Clerk Susan Galvin, the Town Moderator Elizabeth Dillon, and I feel like I'm blanking. Oh, John Keenan from Conservation. So had all those boards represented, had their opportunity to ask questions specific to them and ask questions, you know, about town government and municipal law more generally. The panel recommends that the Select Board interview Harrington Heap, KP Law and Mead Talam and Costa. You know, we know you're familiar with MHTL, so defer really to the Select Board on whether the Select Board thinks an interview with MHTL is necessary. But at this time, the recommendations would be interviews with Harrington Heap, KP and Mead Talam and Costa. We did conduct the first interview with Harrington Heap this evening. The other two interviews would be the morning of July 30th, potentially three if the board so votes to incorporate MHTL into that process. So there's no real action needed now other than moving forward to pursue the interviews as laid out.
You don't need a motion for that.
No, I don't think so.
I'm comfortable with that. I think, you know, the whole idea of having a screening committee is that they make recommendations that you listen to and then you consider the finalists. So if you've identified three finalists, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'm good.
I agree.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Milano, then. So let's move to item 14, discussion update October 27, 2025, Fall, Special Town Meeting Potential Warrant Articles.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. So going through the order as presented on the agenda, we had discussed previously the alcohol town property potential bylaws amendment. The alcohol in-town buildings bylaw change was approved by the Municipal Law Unit, the Attorney General. So that bylaw will be advertised in the Milton Times in July and August, after which it will become effective. That's just for buildings. I had put in the packet two versions of this bylaw, one bylaw that was marked up by Mike Zulus through some of the feedback that that group had provided to the Select Board. I had also put in the packet a version that I had marked up prior to his or maybe kind of at the same time. And the board had asked to see both and figure out how it wants to proceed from there. So.
So I haven't even read it yet. I got to take a peek at it. I don't have any time, but I will.
And then in terms of what kind of process to try to work towards a final version and who you'd like to try to work together to get that done.
Okay. Well, I know Mr. Wells cares deeply about this one.
Yes, I'll gladly take that on.
Let's, if we could put this on maybe our agenda for the 30th and then let's make sure that everyone has a chance to read both of those and then ideally we can vote to approve one article to get to the warrant committee in time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. Light trespass?
Yes, I circulated a draft from Erin Bradley. I missed that she had sent a different version, so I recirculated that today. I don't know if you want to treat that similarly or if members are comfortable with that warrant article.
I'm comfortable with that warrant article. I know she's worked very hard on it and I had a chance to look at her, the latest version, both versions that came out today. And the latest version to me looks good and I know there is a number of folks around town that are in favor of this when we had our public hearing. So I don't know, but again, I want to open that up to the, to the board.
I have that chance to read it.
We should give it to all the Town Council candidates to give us their opinion and see how they do.
If Mr. Daley hasn't had a chance to read it yet, let's, let's put that on for the 30th as well then.
Okay. The next two are more straightforward. These are well, kind of already in production, already discussed with the warrant committee, but we pulled back on them only to lighten the load for the June Special Town Meeting, so.
Article C?
C and D.
So I'll make a motion to approve Article C and Article D as written for the fall Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Ms. Egerty, I got the second in in time.
We said it at the same time.
Any further discussion? Mr. Daley gave you the.
You get the next one.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Climate Action Planning Committee.
Alex Hasha did circulate drafts. We haven't had a chance to speak about them, but I think we should be able to wrap that up. I think the draft that he submitted, I don't know if you saw it, Mr. Chair, yesterday or, yeah, I think it was yesterday. I thought it looked like the bones of what the board had talked about with him.
That's what it looked like to me as well, yeah.
So I think it's in pretty good shape. I just, I haven't, I don't think we've had a chance to really wrap it up. We could include it on the 30th. I just don't want to, I just don't have another meeting before the 26th of August. We could include it on the 30th. I just don't want to, I just don't have another meeting before the 26th of August.
I know, I know. Has anyone, did anyone else have a chance to look through that article?
No, but I've looked at, I've spoken, I know where he's at. I'm pretty comfortable with where he's going with it, but.
I'm comfortable with it, too. I feel like, you know, it wouldn't be bad to.
Approve it if it's going to be submitted by this board.
Right.
If the Climate Action Planning Committee is submitting it, that committee can just vote to approve it. So that's more of a question, and they could vote to submit it, and then the Select Board could be, you know, listed as submitting it alongside them.
So I think that's probably the best option, and that makes them the submitting authority. And then, you know, we can still discuss it.
Right.
I think that gets it, I think it expedites the process a little bit.
This is just still the same report that was submitted in slides that was, that we discussed at the last Select Board meeting, correct? Or was there something updated?
It was an article based on our.
Okay.
Feedback from the presentation of the.
Was that shared with all of us?
You know, now that I'm, now that you say that, I think maybe he sent it to myself and Nick and maybe, and Mr. Chair. He might have been copied on.
9:45, Mr. Dale, we're still on your A-game.
Perhaps, I don't think I made, it made it out to the full board, because it was still a draft.
I'm still okay with us going to the Select Board, and I mean, going to the warrant committee and us taking our.
Right, I think it makes sense to have it come from the Climate Action Planning Committee.
I, yeah, I would agree with that. You're right. It went to, well, Arthur was on there, but it was me and the Nicks and Lynn from the town side. So I think that probably makes the most sense.
And I'll report back to them that.
And then we can still have a discussion on it and vote to, you know, on a recommendation.
I thought we were going to be in on it quick on the 30th.
We're working on it.
What are we doing?
That one's not going on the 30th, so that'll stay off.
What's?
MPIC is, I don't have an article from them yet. I know they've, I've just put it, so it's listed, so folks are aware that we expect an article to be spit by.
We have to submit the final report, but there are also questions of, you know, any loose ends that haven't been tied up. Should we extend some of the work? So I think that, that is something that we need, we need to get more of a recommendation as to the substance of that, but.
An MPIC can submit?
Yes.
For money? For money?
An article, they can.
No, an article, yeah. I mean, technically, the work expires at town meeting.
This is the law.
Yeah.
So I think making, like, let's just make sure that MPIC is aware of the timeline and deadlines for submitting the articles. And then if they are interested in submitting, that's fine. Any, any further discussion on MPIC? On the Identification of Law Enforcement in the Town of Milton, so this came up, this was suggested to me by a couple of folks. I subsequently, as mentioned earlier, talked with both Chief King, as well as folks who work with LOOS, which is the organization that deals with what's going on in ICE right now. I know that as a, I, I know that this is something that's on everyone's mind. The opinion of both the chief and LOOS was that the passage of anything like this that would require law enforcement officers to identify themselves, or not wear masks, or anything like that, would be pretty much performative and really only apply to the Milton Police Department, and also would probably have the, I think we're not going to be putting anything like this on the warrant.
I agree.
Is there any, anybody else want to add anything to that?
No, I agree with the Chair's assessment there.
All right, so then I think, Mr. Milano, that gets us through 14, yeah?
Yes, I'll just add that the Planning Board is looking at a potential, at least one article related to the signed by law. And when Tim Zarwinski first worked in Milton as the Assistant Director, he had worked on a thorough update to the signed by law. And after his departure, it just never got carried through, and then when he came back, there are other matters ongoing. So they're looking to get that signed by law that had been pretty much wrapped up in eyes dotted and t's crossed, reviewed and prepared for the Fall Town Meeting. I know there are a couple other they're, they're looking at, but the Planning Board's meeting Thursday. They've been working on revisions to the signed by law to present to the town meeting in October. So once I have that, I will distribute it to the board.
Okay.
And the School Building Committee one, that was mentioned earlier as well, so we'll.
East Milton Fire Station Request for Proposals Process and Next Steps.
Mr. Daly had requested that this be on the agenda as we approach, we had a brief, very brief conversation about it at a prior meeting. I'll just note that, again, the project should come online in the next 12 to 15 months, which means we will be vacating that building in the next 12 to 15 months. And while we discussed a potential conversation with the community in September, October timeframe, I think there was an interest in having a more rounded conversation about what this process is going to look like and what our goals are here.
I think, now, this may be a long process, as you said, but for us to think about, how do we start the idea of going out for the RFP? Are we being specific in what we want in that unit? Is it a general RFP? Are there any concerns or processing? Is there anything also, you know, concerns about what's in that building as the fire station is leaving, what's on the ground, and what we can possibly put in there, and do we do public input?
You mean as far as buying an RFP for sale?
Yeah. Well, whatever our decision is, is it for sale, do we keep it?
Yeah, do we lease it just on a.
To keep with the town?
Yearly basis.
Did I read while I was gone, the Fire Station Building Committee Chair, did he come before you, asking you to?
He did. He asked that if we, he asked that we sell, I believe, and that if we did, that at least, that some portion of it go to the new fire station.
Yeah, for Atherton.
So, as you know, I said, as the liaison, I don't vote. I follow this extensively. And Bill Ritchie talked about this a great deal. I mean, the four itself is, I think it's like 100,000 or 50,000 just to fix the four. But the key point is, we need money, and there's a potential that we could get between 800,000 and a million dollars in the sale. And that's, whether it goes to the fire station or it goes to, I mean, you just heard a police chief say, can't even get an IT. Like, I think my biggest fear through this whole thing, I've said this to you, is, once they're gone, it's, it's, they're empty. That's, I'd rather, Joe, I'd rather get this started, put on an RFP. There are people who are interested, and.
Do we need to be specific in the RFP? Asking, do we have to say, these are the sorts of projects we want, or do we just put it out there and sort through what comes in?
Are we going to do, so we're going to sell the building outright?
I wouldn't keep, I mean, we can bring Bill in. He knows, we don't want to keep that building. We definitely, let's sell that building.
In terms of public procurement, the decisions that have to be made are.
Yeah, any of it has to be an RFP, yeah.
The first question is, what kind of a disposition is it? Is it a sale? Is it a 99-year lease? Is it a 20-year lease? Is it a five-year lease? That's question one. It obviously ties to question two, is how do we want to structure the RFP? Do we just want, we'll just take top dollar? If it's just a top dollar, which is the sealed bid, we don't care who the owner is, we don't care what the, who the buyer is, we don't care what their plans are. Obviously, they'd have to comply with whatever the zoning is. But that would be kind of easiest is to sell it, and all we care about is price. Where it gets complicated is.
Yeah, is that necessarily what's in the best interest of the town in that specific spot?
Selling it?
Yeah.
It only has two parking spaces. What are you going to do, like?
I don't know. Well, I mean, it's just like.
Well, just selling it to anyone, right?
Yeah, but it's also like, if, if we sell it and, you know, it just is more of a draw or creates more traffic or whatever, I mean, sorry, it's like really late.
So it definitely has an interest. So I think, I'm with you.
You know what I mean? It's like the development, the development component of it, like, would we, do we want to see more housing there? Do we want to see?
I don't think.
You know what I mean?
I don't think it's going to be, I don't think, I've listened to several of the big ones. They're already over there, and they're like.
They don't, they, there's not interest in that.
You have to maintain the, the built, the outer, the outer design, just like the MAC, you have to end up, and the, you have to maintain that. Now, you can really do it up. You could, you know, look at, look at Central Fire Station. Look at the old, I mean, who would have ever thought that would, it would look like it does now? But the historic aspect of it, you're not tearing it down and building.
Okay.
Condos?
No.
Or whatever.
So it occurs to me, Mr. Daly, did you?
No, I just, I don't, I don't know what can go in there, actually. I don't know. But, but to Ms. Hagerty's point, it's, if, let's say, this wouldn't happen, let's say Target comes in, and they're the biggest, they're the biggest bid, right? And that's, a lot more people coming in. We already have these issues in East Milton. Do we need to take these things into consideration as we go out to the RFP?
Yeah.
Because if, because if it's just top bid.
So I think, so we've got, what, 15 to 18 months before this thing, before we're out of there-ish?
You think that long?
We, sorry, a year from now, 12.
So you've got 12 months.
I think it, I think it merits at least having some community input in terms of what our process is going to be. And this, I, I think, and I, you know, wanted to raise this as, as a thought, is, it might be nice for us to move our meetings around a little bit in town, so that folks that, you know.
They're going to go on the road again.
So, yeah, let's take, you know, do a little road show, and.
You can have a shorter commute.
You know?
No, I did it already. I did it. I did it already. Let's do it. Let's do it.
We're going to barnstorm through Milton.
So it might make sense for us to think about one of our September meetings, having it in East Milton, and having this as an agenda item, and it might be helpful to have a sort of draft RFP that we could consider at that meeting. And, you know, we could be circulated in advance, and then definitely, I think we would want to invite maybe the East Milton Neighborhood Association to come in.
Chamber.
Yeah, the Chair, yeah, could come in and, and comment on that. And then obviously, we would have, you know, the citizens speak beforehand. People could, could also chime in with their ideas. Does that, does that sound like a good path forward?
Okay.
All right.
But we also do have to just get this done, too.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We got to get it done.
And I'll just note that a long-term lease or a sale requires town meeting approval to. Now, it's, we either take, we either go to town meeting with a request to them to authorize the Select Board to lease it or sell it without town meeting necessarily being able to put any more limitations on that. Or the Select Board conducts the procurement and then brings a very specific land disposition agreement for a specific purchaser, for a specific project to town meeting for approval, so.
I think that's probably going to end.
That's a more common path with cities and towns, but you can go both ways. So then, again, that, now we're working towards, we're not working towards a 12-month timeline. Now it's really getting to the town meeting, because otherwise.
Well, you can put the RFP out in October, and then.
For sure. So that's, I just, in terms of timeline, that's, I just wanted to add that piece of it.
That's, that's an important highlight.
If you look at two, one a purchase and one a sale, Discovery School took us, what, five years to do it? I mean, five years to, where the purchase of the land is, we did it really quick.
Yeah.
They put it out, we bid, we, and we got, and it was very fast, and now it's, they built, it's going to reality.
It all depends on like what the goal of the project is, right?
I think you're going to have interest. I think you're going to have commercial interest. And it exists, is the building exists.
With Discovery, there was this idea that the property was worth more than what the bid was, and so they put it out again, and the bids came back the exact same way. So I think, you know, the market, market kind of, we'll have to rely on the market for this one, too. But I, let's do that for our September. We can discuss which meeting that would make sense to have in, in East Milton, and where we could do it. INET Installation, item 16.
Really briefly, the project has started. They started last week, completed a couple of miles of fiber. One piece here that is tied to the prior discussion is, right now, the fiber is supposed to connect to the East Milton Fire Station. It is not easy or cheap to get it across the highway to the East Milton Station. If we're not going to own it or have ownership or use of that building 12 months from now, it doesn't make sense from an institutional network to get it over there. So it's something we're working through. We need to talk to the broadband committee, solicit their feedback if we can in time to make a decision before it's too late. But it's just, I wanted to see what that discussion was. The board was committed in selling it. I'd say there's no sense in connecting it, but if there's a chance, that's not.
Use it as a municipal broadband, of course, too, which has been.
Well, that's the other element, getting it across.
Wouldn't take everybody on that side out of the municipal broadband.
We'd have to get over there eventually anyway, so that's, that's part of the calculation there.
Okay.
More to come on that specific component.
Okay. Item, any other question, question on INET? 17, Quarry Hills Lease Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, again, came up at the last meeting in terms of requests for future agenda item. I shared a copy of House Bill 3897, which grants an 50-year extension to the lease of the Quincy portion of Granite Links to Quarry Hills, which is the entity that owns that property, or leases that property and operates the golf course. There is, there have been no discussions with Milton, no approach to Milton, no impact in terms of any lease extension for Milton at this time. The board was interested in maybe having a little bit of a discussion, and I do apologize for getting to this at a later hour.
I will be quick, because this is another one of mine. This was, so this was brought to my resident that, well, actually, when we were at Parks, we did the switch in Conservation Land. We now have a small parcel there that is interrupted by the lease line. Is it possible, how do we start the talks with Quarry Hills, if they're not going to be using that piece, to move their lease line back so that we could get about a little bit over six acres for Parkland? Since we're currently in a struggle for, and that would be a good place if we were able to, in the future, develop it, but to have that under Milton ownership. So that's the opportunity there.
I'm going to be brief.
Mr. Wells?
I brought this to his attention. I can just tell you, this is moving quickly, and I'm trying to, and as I said to Mr. Milano, now is the time. I sat through the entire presentation that they presented. They never even mentioned us. So what they, was it till I brought up the nine acres and all the, I'm like, and I said, I call them, I'm like, bring that, let's, now's the time to do it. Let's have the discussion, get something, as Mr. Daly says, for the benefit. Because what if, what if we don't renew our nine acre, and they, because they have major plans for what they, they're going to put a hotel, or all this stuff up there. And our nine acres, 20-something years, and we say, hey, we want it back? That's nine, that's nine premium, let's get something. They've got grandiose ideas, let's get it now. Let's, let's bring. So I think you should call them, set up a meeting, and let's meet with them.
I think that makes sense, and.
They know it's coming. They're kind of set the table.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to be a part of that, and I said Quarry Hills and Granite Links.
Yeah.
Same thing.
That's the more correct.
Do you need a motion on that, do you think, or?
No, only that it may also take some advocacy from the Select Board with other legislators on this matter, as it.
Oh, you'll, you'll get it.
So that just, that may, that may require some follow-up actions from this board. But for now, I'm good with this consensus.
Okay. So then we're going to item 18, pilot payment for Milton.
Make a motion to approve pilot payment for Milton Academy. Milton Academy gift payments to Fire Department, Police Department, Library, and the Teen Center.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 19. Do we have to read this whole thing?
I will display it on the screen, and if the motion could approve the vote in accordance with what has been displayed on the screen.
I'll make a motion to authorize the issuance of MWRA bonds in the amount of $1,275,000 for the MWRA-led service line replacement project, as outlined on the screen in this public meeting on the state at this time.
I will second the conclusion of the scroll.
All right, the scroll is concluded, and the motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's the secretary?
Ms. Hagerty.
You, you got to sign?
Yeah, you got to sign.
We have.
You got it.
We have.
Are you already signed it already?
No.
No, no, no.
I would take a meeting minute, oh, this is the meeting minutes review and approval process. I'm going to suggest that we postpone this, because this is something that Mr. Cohane wanted to discuss, and he's not here with us. And if there's no objection, I might move that we just do the meeting minute approvals at a future date.
It's up to you, Mr. Chair. You have discretion.
I think let's move it along. So then let's move to 22.
Make a motion to approve one-day liquor license. Use this estate located at 1424 Canaf, August 17, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the theater, and the opens, presents, as you like it.
Second.
Well, Mr. Daly, I think wins this tie, so we'll give Mr. Daly the second, as you like it, Mr. Daly. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone go see some.
Town Administrators Report.
That'll be quick.
I will be, I have quite a list here. No, I will be brief. That, I just want to note that the Pilot Committee met on Monday. Mr. Daly, Matt Keswick, and myself, with Nick Connors, to regroup on the Pilot Committee's work, and we have a game plan. And we'll be setting up a follow-up meeting and starting to reach out to the institutions to reintroduce the committee, the, and the pilot work that we are looking for, and to have some of those conversations again, that the committee had previously been doing pretty regularly. And that's, that's my report for this evening. And that's, that's my report for this evening.
Chair's Report. I'll just add that if you were here tonight and you didn't get to say, say what you wanted to say about Randolph Ave or anything else, you can always email us, and if you were online and didn't get a chance to speak, please, again, email us. We do read all of our emails, and we will respond if it's, if it's inappropriate to respond to. But I'm sorry that we couldn't get to everyone, and, again, our rules don't allow for comments from the floor during anything other than citizen speak. So apologies to those, but I'm hopeful that they were able to speak with, with our MassDOT folks, and thank you again to MassDOT for coming out for that. I'm really grateful that we're getting some quick movement on this, and look forward to some improvements there soon. That brings us to 25, Public Comment Response.
You just did it.
I kind of did it already. I just realized it. I don't know if there's anything, in terms of the SBA, the School Building Committee, do we want to, do we want to throw that on the 30th as well?
We probably should, right?
It's just a simple, like, you know, change 2028 to 2032, so it should be pretty.